Um. I'm still going to give you a quick report from Essex where um. The Essex town administration is saying that they plan to put the entire increase in the school budget on an override. So it will be level funded from Essex. Is. Yeah. Just. There will be more later, but just have that in the back of your mind because it's.
Wow.
Yeah. Okay, the colleague Morse's of action items. Sir, any comment on the action items? Anything that we need, anything? You don't need. Okay, um. I noticed that. There's. Something on here for um. The. I guess the new positions come under discussion. The the new positions and the rearranging of the finance department.
It'll be part of your budget discussion later.
In property. Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Colleen Morse is is I could be here, so we won't be interviewing her. The next thing is the friends and trees presentation. Um, we have. We have been asked to bless the new trees. Um, I don't know that it's. And I think I would like to hear about them, so. Jody.
Thank you very much. Greg, can you do you have the the little outline that I gave you?
Yeah, I'm trying to pull it up.
Follow along. Thank you very much. I'm going to be brief today. I'm going to be very packed schedule today, and I very appreciate being able to fit in. Quick background, we applied for and received a CPC grant in 2023 to plant trees in both Rose Dale Main Cemetery and also the Little Cemetery. Um, and it was a grant of $28,000. So in 2023, we actually planted 10 new trees in Rose Dale. We did a lot of cleanup of invasives and so forth in Rose Dale Extension. And when 2024 came along, we started looking at Rose Dale Extension. We recognized that because there's so few trees there, I believe it's our newest cemetery. We wanted to step back because I think we had an opportunity to do something special as opposed to, you know, let's put a tree here, here, and here. Um, and so I actually asked the CPC if we could have an extra year. And so in the past year, we have done just that. We have taken a complete tree inventory. We have assessed the health of the existing trees. And we have come up with a design with the help of Lolly Gibson, who is a professional landscape architect. So my first thank you is to Lolly. I'm not sure if she's on Zoom or not, but this is her plan. And we had four goals for this plan. The first was when we plant trees, we obviously want to make the cemetery look beautiful. That seems to be. That's what that's what your blessing, I guess. We also needed to remove some high-risk dangerous trees. There are a number of Norway maples that are in there, especially along the borders that are. I mean, I wouldn't even want to walk under them. They're in such poor shape. And then finally, if you might be aware, the new, it's not that new, but the idea of planting native plantings in order to improve our ecosystem, support wildlife, support insects and birds and so on, has become very top of mind for anybody planting today, whether it's planting flowers or trees or um, working in agriculture or whatever. So that was one of the things that we thought that we would do is we would only plant native trees. And so when we specified, and these are some of the trees, there, I think, were we had 10 or 11 different species that we've chosen for for Rose Dale so far, and they're all native. We try not even to have culprits. So we're somewhat purist. And if you look at the second page of your um, little handout here, you can see the native habitat value of each of these trees. Some of them are nesting. This is for nesting. They're pollinators. There's a lot of benefits. It also improves the soil. They sequester more carbon. Native trees are good. So one of the goals of this project was to use this as a showcase to educate people in town. If you're going to plant trees on your property, maybe you should think about a shag park hickory or something that maybe you've never heard of before. There's some beautiful trees, and this is going to allow them to come in and actually see what these trees look like. The stretch goal for this, once we get up to at least 25 unique species, is to be certified as an arboretum. Well, that's down the road, maybe another year or two, but that is definitely, you know, behind this is that I think it would be really great for the town of Manchester to have one of our cemeteries uh, be certified, and you would have signs on the trees and so forth, and we'd have to work that out with obviously the DPW can get permission to do that, but that's a stretch goal. When is this going to happen? Next month. We're going to plant 39 new native trees. Removing about eight to 10 unhealthy trees. We'll be doing some dead some dead wood pruning. There's some actually beautiful sugar maples over by the high school that could definitely benefit from some pruning, and they are native, so we're saving those. Uh, we're going to be testing and amending the soil as needed. And whilst we're going to install a temporary drip system, so the first two or three years after trees are planted, it's very important to be able to water them, give them supplemental watering if we have a drought, which seems to happen every year, other years, we want to make sure that these trees live. And who's going to do this? First of all, I wanted to thank also the DPW. This is Chuck had asked me to make a presentation because when I, I think I told him all the work he was going to do, that we were going to do, it was like, maybe you shouldn't have everybody understand what's happening before we move forward here. We get permission from the DPW, and they're extremely helpful for us. Where can we plant in the cemetery? Sean is great, and he knows that he spends time walking around the cemetery, making sure that we plant them in the right place. The Friends of, so the Friends of Manchester Trees is going to be doing all the planting and watering. And that will be paid for completely by the CPC grant and by funds from our nonprofit. So my second thank you, if there's anybody on Zoom, I thank our members and our donors for supporting this project, and this is just going to be a very fun thing to see come to fruition. Um, thank to, thank you to Jack Burke. I think he might be hit on the line for the grant. And in front of you, you've got this plan. If anybody has any questions, that's pretty much the end of the story.
Any questions?
Um, I've got one for Chuck. This is not going to interfere with any future human plantings. So, yeah, I think the, there's a couple of locations where we just need to verify that there's nothing uh, going on. So there, there's a couple on the plan that I think we'll need to slightly move, so I think we can work with Jody on that one. Uh, the, the next one is some of the removals, like the invasive maples, more nervous that they might disturb somebody who's already planted there. So we're just going to have to take a closer look at that and get the field. But um, the only place that we can sell more, make more lots would be where the cemetery office is, which I do have plans to remove that and make that grave site. Uh, but, you know, that's obviously a huge, I don't think that interferes with the cemetery. Um, and then. Yeah, the only other thing that we talked about in the cemetery master plan was potentially along the side where, you know, where the school would be if we did some sort of
cremation garden.
Cremation burial plot. So this would prevent that probably would be consideration. This is, this is right. We haven't, we haven't really.
No, I'm good. I'm, I'm looking forward to start learning about trees, all of these trees that I didn't recognize the names of, about half of.
So I'm just, it's great. Basically, you're encouraging strolling through a cemetery.
I'm doing what?
Encouraging strolling through a cemetery.
Yes, yes, absolutely.
Like whistling.
Absolutely. Well, um, you know, you look at, you look at the cemetery, what's the one in Cambridge that's so famous? Mount Auburn Cemetery is one of the first cemeteries that actually created an arboretum as part of the cemetery. And I mean, what better place, you know, when you go to visit a loved one's grave, is to have some, you know, beautiful trees shading and being able to do that as a walking period. I also love the fact that it's right near the high school because I think it'd be a great place for, you know, kids in a biology class or botany, you know, if they're studying botany to come and see this because this is a living example of how to, how to um, take a degraded site, which this was a gravel pit. And this will start to, you know, birds will start arriving and insects and all sorts of good things that we want. And so it'd be a great educational opportunity as well.
Um, question, are there plans to expand the number of plantings in the future, distant or near or?
I'm always looking for.
I know you are.
Well, if you look at this plan, we have concentrated on the side where the high school is.
Sure.
Um, but the side where the building is over here. And I had not, I was not aware of this idea of having a place for for Ernst or whatever, but this would be a great area to actually, once this building comes down, is to plant with that in mind. Do you, wherever that.
Well, I think we're looking at grade lots with the idea. But, you know, certainly somewhere near the lobby.
Yep, there's, there's always opportunity.
I'm just curious. Arboretum, there's a certain criteria you are to become, quote, an arboretum?
Yes, 20, so we're this, we would, we would go for the lowest level because we don't have paid help. We don't have all these things which you, which you would need. So there needs to be signs on the trees, like little plaques identifying them. You need to have at least one event there a year, so we would probably do a tree walk as part of the Friends of Trees, and you need 25 unique species.
All right.
Thank you very much for your time.
Um. Chuck, you are the one who encouraged us to hear this.
Right, so, you know, one of the, in the back of my mind, we did work with Joey on Pleasant, at the Pleasant Grove Cemetery where we built out that new area. And there were some comments from the public, you know, that we went up in there, so I just wanted to make sure that this was a public, you know, place to see this. Um, no, not just us showing up with 39 trees.
That's a good question. Do you have plans to communicate to the community prior to having the trees show up?
Absolutely, absolutely. And my background is marketing, so we're definitely going to get word out that we're doing this. Thank you, Kathy.
So. Shall we just um, agree that this is a subject that we can support as a consensus?
Yes, absolutely. Good luck. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. The, um. What I should have said, one of the things I should have said at the beginning, is that I have asked that we move the town meeting ahead of the DPW, of the DPW discussions. Um, because, because the moderator asked me to. Um. Um. The next item on the agenda is the um, optimal license for making for that.
Your motion, anyone?
John, you sometimes have something to say?
Sometimes, with regard to this, I looked at it, I've, I've had drinks there. Uh, no, no questions.
From time to time, I have good questions um, about complaints from noise from the neighbors, and I've heard nothing.
You know, in a couple of years, it's, it's been better.
Yeah, so.
Whatever they're doing is working.
Yeah.
They should keep doing.
Yes, they should keep doing.
Yes, I'm ready for motion.
Okay, I move the select board approve the seasonal alcohol license for the interest of Beth and Tennis Club.
Second. Okay, ready for the question?
Yes.
John?
And yes.
And so Jeff, Kathy, yes, Brian?
Yes.
And Jeff?
Yes.
The Affordable Housing Trust was unable to join us. Um. So the next thing is the discussion of the annual town. Sorry, the certification, so, or, because they had sent us a memo. Are we going to be just putting it on the next meeting's agenda?
I found, I'm going to find out the seventh or the 22nd is good for them.
Okay. We. Yep. Okay.
So the draft, the draft warrant is, it's 20, 20 articles. Um. There's a pretty standard um, budgetary lines. Um, locational schools, Essex Tech, there's the town operating, the town capital, the school operating in capital. The OPEB funding, the annual event. Um, the funding for the revolving funds that the Park and Rec has and that the Department of Health has as well. So those are all fairly, um, this, like I said, pretty standard that you see every year, not that the numbers are necessarily standard. Um, the, the school remains, um, a challenging factor here. Uh, the school committee will be meeting tomorrow evening to finalize their request. Um, currently, we have in, in the proposed budget, um, school district appropriation increase of 7.29%. Um, perhaps what they call their Model A projection. Um, so we'll see if that is what they vote up to or not. Um, so with, with their number, assuming that that's the school number, and with our um, operating budgets and capital requests, the, the bottom line for taxpayers currently is, is a 3.5% increase. Um, so that's roughly one and a half percent on the town side, and then the, the two and a half plus on the school side. Um, do, you have that known. Um. The, there are some additional, there's a few more items on the, on the town budget that you wanted to review. Um, the proposed budget does have a couple of, who has one new full-time position is, is, is part of the move to a finance director model. And it also has a boost in the assistant to the town clerk from a halftime position to a full-time position. And then the third staffing change that's in the proposed budget that the finance committee has approved has a new deputy fire chief starting in the fourth quarter. Um, so now, so waiting until fourth quarter to start that full-time, but obviously then it would hit as a full-time position in the FY27 budget. So I know that you wanted to spend a little time on, on those, those staffing. Um, potential staffing changes. And in addition, on the capital side. Um, the, at one point, you had endorsed going forward with a bond for the, for the senior center in anticipation of fundraising. Finance committee is, is not enamored by that idea. They would prefer to have the fundraising get started um, and then do a bond. Um, so you, you talked a little bit about that, but you need a final decision um, which, which direction you want to go with that as well. Um, and then in addition to the um, bonding of the project, there has been discussions regarding funding for the architectural work, the design work for the addition. And is there an ability to put some monies towards that to help with um, finalizing the design and coming up with a plan that then can be presented to potential donors? Um, so it would be helpful to have at least some dollars available for that. Again, in the discussions with the finance committee, we talked about, um, again, finance committee was not in favor of putting town money into that at this point. And we prefer to see that perhaps we, we um, secure some donated funds to jumpstart the, the architectural work as well. Um, so again, you need to make a final decision as, on that as well. And then uh, a potential new article would be to amend our existing water regulations where, as it addresses drought conditions and your ability to impose restrictions for outdoor water use. The state is looking for communities to up, update their regulations to contain some of the language that they would like to see referencing state declarations. So right now, our bylaw focuses on you making the decisions. And the state would like to see some additional language that says when the state declares a drought, then you respond to that.
And they're not looking for standards based on our resources, but on their declarations.
Correct. Correct. Um, and so, uh, Chuck, I were reviewing that earlier today and feel like it wouldn't be that hard to add a couple of paragraphs to our existing uh, bylaw that would incorporate those desire changes from the state. Uh, we're under some pressure to do that. Chuck can explain that a little bit than I can offhand.
Right, so all of our, our water regulations are through MassDP. And in the most recent registration update, so we have to register our water source every 10 years with the EP for basically the quantity of water we're allowed to pump. Uh, and so having a registration is one step easier than having a permit. Uh, permits would absolutely require us to have all of these types of things in place, no matter what, that would be a permit condition. They had up until last year not been able to condition our registrations. So that's where it is, they're conditioning our registration to include their nomenclature about drought. And it is very subjected to the state standards, nothing really to do with our local water supply standards uh, in terms of this declaration of a drought.
So, um, if I am understanding this, we have to abide by the state definition or declaration of a drought, even if Bradley Pond and the well are chock full and happy.
And like, just as like, for example, uh, right now, the, the the condition that they gave us, we have to implement it by April of '25, so right now. Uh, it was pushed back and back and back because of COVID. But like, last fall, we did declare a drought because, you know, things were going down, but the state had also declared the level three critical drought. In January, people started asking, hey, you know, do we still have that restriction in place? That seems weird. You know, we've had a lot of rain, we've had a lot of snow. We said, yeah, but the state hasn't lifted yet. But, uh, they did, and then, you know, I sent a memo, I think to Greg, and you guys lifted them. Uh, a week later, they went right back into drought. So technically, based on that, we would have had to reinstitute the um, institute an outdoor ban, uh, which doesn't make a lot of logical sense, but that's.
So that, that, that's what I'm trying to just clarify, the practical application. So basically, it takes away the local control so that when the state declares a drought, even if our coppers are full, we have to enact some type of water ban based on the level of the drought, regardless of our local inventory.
And the state would argue that their drought plan takes into more, takes into account more than just the water supply. It's taking into account like red flag warnings and, you know, drush, brush, uh, you know, overgrowth, you know, all the, you know, wildfire risk, all that kind of stuff. It's not really, you know, centered around your water supply necessarily. So that's, that's the differentiation is, in essence, yes.
Okay.
State declaration is one size fits all.
Well, so they broke the state into regions at least, but not.
Thank you.
But we're not at the same level necessarily as the Cape or, you know, Western Mass.
Right.
But we are in the same bin as Ipswich Basin and, you know, all the basins that are in Western.
I actually saw in the paper that Rockford had instituted a ban, like.
They re-instituted the, because of the, the level three that the state re-declared.
That was yesterday, didn't include today's.
I have a little clue is how we get, when is the warrant, does the warrant have to close?
We need to close the warrant by, um, like the 25th, 26th. Uh, March. So next week.
Yeah.
So.
And we're looking at putting something on that we haven't seen at all.
Right, so we would have something to you by the first of next week, or end of this week, first of next. Uh, like I say, it's a paragraph or two that would be added to our existing.
And what horrible thing happens to us if we don't do it?
I mean, I hate to put it in jeopardy, our registration, uh, because it is kind of grandfathered in from the 80s. Um, I don't think they would get there. You know, we could say we're working on it. We could say that we're, um, you know, we, we have the ability to restrict based on your, um, you know, declaration anyway, but. Yes, I guess.
So I guess, um, how did this come to our attention at this point in time, I guess, is my question. Since we know this was delayed as a result of COVID or whatever, what, what?
Yeah, there's been some litigation involved trying to push back on this.
There's one E plus water supply that are, you know, in the middle of a process of appeals on those registrations. So those registrations were issued a year or two ago. Um, we're part of that, but basically, you know, all our suppliers are saying you can't restrict us because we have registration. This is a whole bunch of legal stuff from the 80s. Uh, but, uh, you know, in the event that you do, like, we know, it's, it's not. That's, so we're, we're waiting for that process to play out, but we did not get a stay from the courts to do that. So there's a, again, there's a chance that.
Sounds like, yeah, we were waiting for, uh, good news and didn't get it.
Yeah, we implement this by law, and then they say the court agrees with us, but now DP, the state don't really lose all that often, so.
Okay.
So I, my, my thought would be for you to have a special meeting sometime next week to approve the final version of the warrant. We'll, we'll know the school number. Um, the finance committee will meet tomorrow night, uh, Wednesday night with the school number, with their final recommendation. Um, so if we could meet Wednesday or Thursday, it shouldn't take very long. But, but you need to do a final approval of the warrant.
I'm sorry, you're saying Wednesday or Thursday of next week?
Yeah, so, yeah, the 20s. 26th or 27th? Or it can't be pushed off to the 31st? No, okay.
Uh, it's, it's really, yeah, we really need to get it to the.
I can't, I can't do Wednesday. So I could do Thursday.
Thursday.
Is this an evening meeting or early morning?
It's up to all of you.
It'd be easier for me every evening, but.
It's gonna have to be.
It's gonna have to be.
No, I'm good. It's two working steps over here.
Yeah. I'm not sure, but I think so.
You've got to warm it up, maybe.
Six can be done, how long is it? Figure half an hour, 40 minutes?
Yeah. So you need to confirm your position on the various articles, whether you're taking a position or waiting until the lower town meeting.
Yeah, can we start at six though, something earlier than 6:30?
I'm sorry.
Can we start earlier than 6:30?
Yeah, we can, we can do five thirty.
I guess I'm asking the folks who work.
I can do, I can do as early as five o'clock.
Second, even six, right?
Five.
Compromise, 5:30.
Jeff's looking Thursday, right?
I could do Thursday.
Yeah, we're talking Thursday.
Yeah, Thursday, 5:30.
Yeah, I can do 5:30.
Thank you.
What's that date? March?
Twenty twenty.
Yeah.
Um. I think, I think we should start at the beginning and go through other things that are, that have, moving to ninth level of curiosity. Um. Um. One, two. Three. Three is the, the Essex Tech, uh, the Essex Agricultural and Technical School. Was not a lot of controversy.
Actually, uh.
You have the budget, don't you?
I have, if you guys are interested, I have budget books I can bring if you want to see them, if you don't.
No, do you have, have they online?
I have actual books if you want. It's online too, but.
Yeah.
So our number is down?
Yeah.
Our enrollment's down a little bit, but it's always fluid anyway, so, yeah.
Um, if you can send us all a pointer to that online book.
Yeah, I'd be interested.
I mean, I can give you a physical book if you want, Thursday.
I don't need my paper, but. Somebody else might appreciate.
It'd be nice to be able to see it before the meeting too, yes.
Yeah.
Um. Right, um. So there's the operating budget, which um, and then the capital budget. My one area that's going, I think is going to be controversial is number 11, the tender restoration. Controversial is number eleven, the point of tender restoration. And we can't, under capital, I love. Line eleven. So this is she starts the. A B C grant is. Not going to happen.
So we, we had hoped for two different grant sources. She Coast, the Seaport Economic Council. For a million and also C Z M Coastal Zone Management. Also for a million. The C Z M program was announced a couple of weeks ago. Maybe three weeks ago. And significantly less money being awarded, so. We had twenty five million this previous year, the down to five million to award this current year. So asking for a fifth of that was, is not going to. Whether it goes fly, and we must all apply. But we're very skeptical of our chances. Because the, the priority is, is projects that are protecting proper, uh, people. Their focus is on measures that are protecting people from floods. And so. We're not optimistic that the new tender will score high on their ranking. And so we have gone back to a plan B, which seeks. Utilization of fund balance. From the town, plus additional monies from CPC. Originally, we were asking for three hundred thousand from CPC and now we're asking five hundred. And they have, they have approved that. As a recommendation. And then now this eight hundred thousand. To. To be paired with the five hundred thousand plus. Still the one million dollar grant.
And what have you been hearing that you feel the town will support that? Priorities.
Priorities, um, you know. Maybe this is something that we ought to put out for, for fundraising.
The only thing with that is I think. We're on borrowed time, I mean, once more, I mean.
That's, that's the problem.
We have time to. We don't have a year, I don't think, to be honest with you.
And we locked up this winter, but we're just someone.
Yeah.
The fund balance, you had eight hundred thousand dollars lying around, we got that, to put that there, I mean, that's a pretty big dent into our.
So the, the target fund balance is eight percent of total expenditures.
Is that now seven?
So now this, this, we had, we had next familiar. To, to bring in order to get down to eight percent.
Kind of fortuitous.
The finance committee supports this?
Yeah, they did approve. Of this amount.
I guess to Andy's point, I mean, this doesn't affect anything, any other projects moving forward, right?
I mean, no, but obviously if, if you weren't spending eight hundred thousand on this, there's plenty of other projects.
Yeah, I know, but like.
Can't argue that.
Things this year that.
For example, you had another eight hundred thousand dollars speed up if we have. P bass.
Not at this annual town meeting. Asking again for a special town meeting in the fall and. Might change my answer. We're still in the process of. Writing the reports and submitting them to D E P on that. Eventually, we will need a hundred thousand, whether it's. This town meeting or the next one. So it depends, like Greg said, it depends on how you're counting it. What the timeline you're looking for, but. We will need to spend eight hundred thousand on P bass, there's no doubt about it, but it would not accelerate our current timeline.
Are, are we still applying to C Z M?
We will, yes.
And the, the application that you put in isn't the money, take it or leave it, that's it. They could reduce it to some other number. Not that that's probable. But they could throw a hundred thousand dollars.
They could, yes. We will probably ask for five hundred thousand range.
Okay, so they don't think you're crazy.
Right, and hope for a couple hundred thousand.
Or something, so this number is up to eight hundred. Okay. Still a lot of money.
Obviously, we wouldn't. This is allocated and isn't spent. If we found another source.
If there's an angel out there that wants to come forward and thinks like that, absolutely.
It, it, it has taken us quite a while to get organized to start fundraising for the senior center, which we were anticipating. What's your feeling about the likelihood of, of having a parallel?
One's gonna take away from the others.
We don't want to attract from the fundraising for the. Anybody have any other? Concerns in the. Capital budget?
Just a question again, I'm sorry, what was number twenty one for the boat replacement with? Which boat are we replacing?
So those are for the two. The, the safe boat and the. Main operating boat, right, the eastern.
It's the, it's the small launch we're getting rid of. And we're getting rid of the twenty five foot dependent old coast guy. And. So police are gonna. Pretty much have their boat harbor master, fire department. So we operate two boats, we're getting rid of two boats. So that way we can. Better control harbor. Better safety.
So we're getting rid of the small lines that we just bought?
Not the, not small ones, the.
Yeah, Brian, you wanna chip in? For the boat replacement? Maybe he stepped away.
I think he told me it was one of the easterns.
It was, it was the eastern and.
Okay, I'm here.
Yeah, go ahead, Brian.
All right, hang on, let me shut off this other phone. Yeah, that's me. So the idea is that we would get rid of. The small launch. And move the eastern into the backup launch position. They both can carry the same number of passengers legally. The eastern has more functionality, the eastern can still respond to shallow water events. It's newer, that doesn't really matter, but it would become the de facto backup launch and also serve. Other purposes for the town, which the backup launch cannot. We would sell the safe boat. And so the. Two new boats would replace the safe boat. And the backup launch.
So you get a, so the existing eastern becomes the launch slash backup.
Yep.
And you get a new eastern or equivalent.
Well, it would be, so the two new boats would be both metal sharks, both aluminum. Both brand new, a small, the smaller one would be, the twenty three footer would be. For the police department, for their purposes, their patrolling. Their needs on the water, and then the other boat, the twenty six footer would be. Harbor department. And fire department. Primarily harbor, obviously, but it would be fully equipped. With all of the equipment that the fire department would need to perform EMS and or firefighting incidents.
So it'll have a pump on it?
Yep. Yep, hard mounted.
So I'm confused about the police department boat. I guess I didn't realize. Each public safety department had its own boat.
Well, so we've, all of the boats are public safety boats. That's what we're all, right, so the police department has been moving into a more appropriate and larger role on the water for enforcement. And their mission is a little bit different than ours. And they've been using the. The safe boat primarily. As their platform. So we're replacing that. How old is it now? Almost twenty year old platform with a brand new one and upgrading from an eastern, which has been the primary platform for the eastern. For the harbor department since I took over. It never really served the fire department's. Needs adequately. This would bring us very much in line with all the other communities around us. All the other communities around us have, have these. Aluminum newer. Platforms for. Firefighting, EMS and police.
So Michael, especially Andy would go now, both the, would do law enforcement.
Yes.
Right now, with the new. Reforms. The harbor master himself doesn't have. Arrest, okay, so you'll be outfitted with a blue light as opposed to.
Correct, so yeah, because I'm post-certified. I'll be able to, it's just police certified. So all, both posts that we get will both have blue lights and be multifunctional. So.
It's kind of an emotional response, but the easterner is a pretty friendly boat. Goes into really shallow water. I'm not. The, the metal shark is. No. It seems too bad to, to give up the. The friendly appearance of the harbor. In, in favor of something that looks a lot more martial.
I, I think though, I mean, having something we can fight fires on the water with is important. So that, that would be the function of one of these at least, right? Well, we, we don't have anything right now, right?
Well, you'd have to break.
Sort of.
Yeah, you'd have to break up the pump. If you notice, there's a small plastic box at the end of the dock. There's a, there's a monitor in there, so we gotta break that up, set it all up and then go up and fight the fire. With the new boat setup, all they have to do is hop on the boat and go. Because the monitor is already built in our front, which is the nozzle up front. And it'll be, it'll be a lot more EMS friendly. There's gonna be a lot more space to work on patients or. Subjects and it's got cutouts, so you can pull people out of the water.
So I guess I under, I, I appreciate the additional capabilities from a safety standpoint. What I'm not clear on is why we need two of them.
Well, so basically, we have two boats that we use constantly now. And we're trying to fill slots to cover the water. Think about it technically, we should probably be running from. Covering the harbor from at least seven in the morning till at least eleven, twelve o'clock tonight. And that's a big area to cover. So having the police offset us. Helps out huge.
So we don't have the staff for that kind of coverage, even though we should.
That's what I'm saying, so there's the boats, but then there's the staffing, I mean. I don't, I'm not clear.
We're not adding boats.
Okay.
We're, we're swapping. So existing, we have the existing safe boat, the orange boat, right?
Right.
Which is not. The greatest design. In terms of friendliness, it's even less friendly than the shark.
You wanna, you wanna upgrade that?
We wanna get rid of that, it's often expensive boat to run, those are big motors. More horsepower than really we, we need. Brian and Andy, I go off the course here, but. So we get rid of that and we get a new one that replaces that.
Got it, I'm okay with that.
And then we get rid of the eastern. I mean, we shift the eastern. To become. The, the second launch and also a spare for busy harbor weekends.
I guess I'm just trying.
And shallow water.
And shallow water.
So we're getting rid of two boats and we're buying two.
No, 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 I understand, but I'm trying to understand the eastern, why? So it's too old, is that, that what we're saying? Okay.
Well, it's. The eastern. Really served a purpose that Ian touched on, it was approachable, it was something people were comfortable with. One person could operate it. Both of these new boats require just one person on board, whether that's. You know, the right way to go or not, the, the safe boat really requires two to operate, so it's less staffing for these two boats. The, my sensibility of the eastern. When we started was an approach to. Make myself approachable. And I think that we've reached a point in the harbor now where we don't need an eastern. A specific type of boat to let people know that we're approachable, that we're there to help, that people can come and talk to us. Now, I. I think that it's time to have. Vessels that serve. Any potential incident that comes up far more appropriately. Than the eastern does and with potentially less staffing.
I, I don't understand the less staffing on that part.
So the two new boats, the two new boats can be, they're. Open boats, walkarounds, so one person can safely operate them. As we know with the safe boat, it is, it would be extremely difficult to go out and perform. Anything with just one person because it's a closed cabin.
I understand getting rid of the safe boat, I understand placing that with a shark.
Yep.
That has a mounted pump.
Right, got it.
That, that all makes perfectly good sense, it's the second shark that.
It's like, why do we need two of the same thing? For me, that, that's.
Well, I don't think they're the same boat, I mean.
They aren't.
Same build, but not the same.
So once. Bye bye.
The second one is smaller.
Second one is actually smaller than the eastern.
It's just got more tech room.
Yep.
So and then the smaller one set up just for police has everything they need on it. And the second, and the second one, the bigger one, for us. We have a lot more capabilities. Pump out for boats sinking. You know, firefighting capability. EMS capability.
It still sounds though like the second one is the police boat. And we don't have the staffing to have that.
Well, we've always had them.
I'm sorry?
We've always had them.
Well, that's what I was asking, I didn't realize we had. Like how, how many hours of the police on the water during this, I'm asking.
So that safe boat is basically a police boat now, right, Brian?
It's, it's largely.
Well, that would be their new boat.
So Todd, Todd, the show is on the line, there's one, he's got his hand up, he can, he can help.
Thanks, chief.
Go ahead, Todd. We're not, we're not here, yeah.
So Chief's getting that squared away, I would. Point out that these two vessels are purpose-built, built to the needs and specifications of. The town of Manchester. You're never gonna get an eastern. Or a Parker or. You know, some off-the-shelf boat to really truly. Be exactly what the town needs. These boats are designed for what? The waterfront does, for what the police do, for what EMS does, what fire does, what harbor departments.
Can you hear me? No?
No, yes.
Yep, so thanks. From the middle of May till September-ish, maybe Labor Day or a little bit after, we, we currently staff the. Harbor forty hours a week with, with one officer. On the weekends, we will backfill that with two. Just because of the busyness and the type of boat, the safe boat has been. You know, obviously, we need two, two, two people to effectively run that boat, so with the purchase of this new boat, we could. Not backfill it on the weekends and just run with one officer, since Andy is now post-certified, we would have actually two police officers out there. I don't know if that makes sense or not.
I guess what I'm asking is, do we have? A, a member of the harbor master's team and a member of the police department? Both boats out on the water at all times during the high season? Like from Sunday and to.
Not every day, no.
So what I'm getting at is, how much downtime do these boats have, right? The question is, why do you need two? I understand getting the one. Which is professionally outfit for public safety, totally supportive. Unless you have the proper staffing to staff another. Unless you have the proper staffing to staff another, you know, group of people on the boat for and 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 wanna do that for a significant uh number of hours, wouldn't that second boat experience a lot of downtime?
So the harbor staff is on duty uh essentially from eight AM till eight PM every single day, and uh sometimes that happens when, you know, obviously during the forty hours that the police are there, it's it's not always the same mission. And remember, the reason we have a second boat is because of the volume of traffic in the main harbor and the volume of traffic east of us, uh at Graves, White, Black, Magnolia Beach. That created the ma- demand for a second boat, that that second boat came about because the harbor department was receiving uh lots of communication from folks up at that end of town saying, you're not doing your job, you're not down here, where are you? When in fact, uh getting away from the main harbor was virtually impossible because of the volume of traffic. So that's why we have two boats, um, and the police have a place, they have their their role out there, they are the enforcement arm for the town of Manchester. And it doesn't matter if that's covered with water or not, uh, it was usually helpful to have the police out there um enforcing.
I would just recommend that if this goes forward as is on the warrant, you need a cr- I I I agree with Ann, I think this is gonna get questioned, I think.
Yeah.
You need a very crisp story as to why we need these two boats, I'm not hearing it. Um, I I I appreciate the one, it's the second one that I'm not.
Well.
So I I don't wanna, I think we have other, we may have other things to discuss here, I just.
They didn't fine tune the presentation.
Fine tune the narrative here because I'm I'm telling you, that's um, it's a little squishy.
Could I jump in for two seconds?
Sure, sure, good.
Um, so just to kind of echo what Bion and Chief Fitzgerald have uh mentioned. Um, you know, you look at it from a response perspective, we've done numerous responses just in the past year in the water where we go out for either a medical or a medical and a police event at the same time. If we only have a single boat to do these three different functions, when we go out take care of a person medically, then we don't have the avenue or ability to leave uh the scene, or if we do leave the scene, now we're leaving the police either without a boat or uh the inability to continue what they're doing, investigations, et cetera. So it's uh fundamentally important to have two vessels to, you know, augment the functions that all the departments are doing.
And I guess the question we have is, why not keep the small launch? Keep the easterner, replace the safety boat with a shark that's fully loaded.
Yeah.
And and that should give you the same number of boats.
Yeah, so let us, let us, let us staff work on that.
Yeah, and also, is the shark, does the shark go into a shallow water as easterner?
That's why we would keep it as the backup launch and uh an auxiliary patrol boat, because it would have that capacity. We use the second launch very, 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 very little. So to keep that vessel, which is good for one thing, uh rather than keep the eastern, uh which is good, that more than one thing, that 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 just didn't make sense to me.
That just sounded the opposite from what I expected you to say, it sounded like the eastern was good in shallow water.
Yep.
And that's why we're keeping it around these new boats are not great in shallow water, unless I misunderstood.
Well, so the the two new boats are both deep V hulls, which are uh the kind of hulls you want for going out when there's the sea or it's rough, uh bad weather, that kind of thing, need to go fast when there's waves. Uh, the eastern, which many times I won't let staff take out under uh bad enough conditions, um. But yeah, I did, the the eastern is a shallow water response vessel, and it can also carry the same exact number of people as the backup launch, which is not a shallow response vessel. Um, and so we, if if we keep the second launch, then we don't need the eastern. We don't need an extra boat, we need two boats. It makes most sense to get rid of the safe boat and the backup launch, and then move the eastern into a dual role. It 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 will have more, it'll give us more options, more capability.
I think we've laid out the problem for the question.
Yes.
Okay, is there anything else in capital that anyone else could think?
Yeah, yeah, and I I wanna follow up on Greg's comment with regard to the senior center and the bond, and he wasn't addressing the bond so much as he was. Money's associated with some architectural work, and I don't know what that number is, twenty-five thousand, I think he got fifty thousand down there.
Yeah.
Okay, remember fifty.
Yeah, it's gonna be a good number.
Okay, may- maybe it is, I don't know how far that gets you in architecture, seems that we get you.
We get semantics.
Pretty far along.
It's good, it's good, it's a good layer.
Right, 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 but.
But there won't be, there won't be, there won't be construction, Doc.
No, 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 not expecting that.
As long as you brought that up, I just wanted to get one more swing, one more bite at the apple. And feel this.
Swing away.
That, uh, it's a, it's a show of good faith to the seniors that we're gonna see this. And I asked them at one point to approve a budget for the for the schools, but we can't find the money for the seniors. They've been, we've always treated them as second-class citizens, okay? No, no, let me please, okay? There is, I don't see the downside to approving, we're not gonna take the money right away, we're just gonna approve the money. Okay, and it we can run concurrently, we talked about this earlier. People, they wanna get in, all right, and I think that by presenting having this bond and running instruction and fundraising concurrently, also, I I I'm surprised that uh the fundraiser can tell tell you that people wanna see bricks and mortar going, and they 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 wanna see something more than, you know, pictures are great, but actual seeing construction really gets the gets the fundraising going. It's it's not unheard of, and I think that uh that we can save, we can probably, we could be in the ground, you know. I just think that it's it's not a, I think it's not a bad idea.
Right, my my thinking is just that uh there's some preliminary work that needs to be done, I know that there was a grant that was put out there that largely is being used by, I think, the uh money-raising group, maybe not all of it, maybe some of it. But to create a story, you do need to have some show and tell, and I'm not talking bricks in the ground, I'm talking about graphics, this is something that it looks like. And they will go out and contact some some major donors before this program ever gets off the ground. Whenever you're money raising, you start money raising and saying, by the way, we're halfway there. And to get there, you have to have some sort of story to tell. These people are already primed, but you still need a little something to be able to say, this is where we're going. And you need some money for some architectural support here. Further, the building is not just gonna be a seniors' building.
Exactly.
The Board of Health is going in there.
So it's town offices that we're.
The uh, you know, the Council on Aging is going in there, there are town offices that are going in there, and that is part of the picture, and I that the the seniors know that, that those are going in there. So the town, it's not just a seniors' building, it is also supporting in part the town's administration.
Exactly.
And so I look at this as probably nodding your head toward that support as well. Obviously, it's gonna be a new line item on our budget next year, well, maybe not next year, but in two years, because there's operating costs, maybe not a lot, but there's gonna be something with the building going on. But the building will be housing some town offices.
Well, that's a fair assessment, um. My main point last week was, I I just disagree with the statement that we haven't shown any love to the seniors, a million dollars.
Million bucks a lot.
I'm sorry, that's a lot of love, okay? And we, the commitment we made to the taxpayers is that we would not spend taxpayer money on the renovations. Now, if we're gonna put town offices in there, that's a legitimate use of taxpayer money, and I'm okay with that. So I just think we have to be respectful and mindful of the commitment we made last year, which was not to spend tax dollars on the renovations, we we made that commitment.
Well, so I know, oh, I don't wanna cut you off.
No, no, no.
We, so we've thrown them three million dollar number out there for this renovation, right? But is that just for the senior center, or is that including the offices?
That's everything.
So I think we need to uh split that some ways.
Right.
Because the seniors shouldn't be up against that whole part of it.
That's a fair comment.
Yes, I agree with that.
Yeah.
You know, if it's a, if it's a, if it's a million for offices, you know, what I I don't even know, but if it's a million for offices and two million for the senior part of it, then.
So so what's the approximate percentage of the the square footage that the town will own? Approximately what percentage of square footage is dedicated to the senior centers versus the town offices?
So it's a couple of offices, so it's it's fifteen percent.
Okay.
Plus, the other thing, and the function hall itself will be wired, correct?
Right, so again, when seniors have priority, but any time that they're not using it, then it'll be available for board meetings and that sort of thing.
A legitimate town expenses, that's all I'm getting to. So if you put some boundaries around that, you know, again, I think this is about sharpening the narrative, okay? Um, we made a commitment last year where we are meeting that commitment, we're not spending money over here. We have town offices to set up, wiring that will be used by boards and committees when they hold their meetings there, that's what this money is for. Totally, that's totally appropriate in my mind.
I think that the bottom line is probably a little bit soft, but the objective here is simply to get some money so that you've got some architectural drawings that you can build into your um money-raising activity early as you can.
And that money has, is going to be spent on both the seniors and.
Understand, but but there's at least a legitimate town taxpayer-funded activity that's going in there that identifies that. It was just the senior center, that's, I think that's inappropriate.
So I I I'm I'm with the fifty thousand, you think that's the right number? Okay.
Small amount like that, the two hundred.
Okay. Is it, would you, are you saying that we should put out a bond for fifty thousand? So that we can start spending spending it right away?
No.
That's just money.
Tap your, I would tap a little bit more of the fund balance.
Okay, so we're. We should have that, right?
Yeah, eight hundred.
So is line, is this line thirteen that we're talking about?
Yes.
Yeah.
So would we change that to fifty thousand and say fund balance?
Okay.
Fine, and and at the fall town meeting, we can face again whether we should bond apart, we will know by then exactly what.
Yeah, I agree, that's the time for that.
Okay.
If it if it happens, it's neat.
I I think we ought to, I think Greg, you need to be prepared to, um, again, that the narrative has to be clear. But also, it would, is there any, when is this fundraising gonna get started? Um, I think we need.
September, I think.
I think a time.
The 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 advanced stuff is gonna happen in the summer, but the official launch, we've already got X.
That's what I'm saying, I think that that narrative has to include the timelines, okay?
Yes.
Cause it's been a year.
There. Anything else in capital that we have to talk about?
Um, so I'd like to circle back to operating if we could.
Sure.
Yeah. Again, we have um the staff online, if you have questions, Jen is here as well, um, you have questions about the staffing.
I have a general question. How'd you get the one and a half percent? When all all these other numbers are going up so high, and the operating only went up one and a half percent.
So, well, so that's the the tax need, so there was some shifting of dollars, right? So there's some additional, for example, um, a little higher number on the local receipts.
Okay.
Increased revenue.
I'm sorry.
You had increased revenue?
No.
From receipts, local receipts.
Right, and some shifting from um not putting as much into into capital, those are new new money.
Right.
Capital, so some of that.
Oh, okay.
So the one point five is the tax increase, what is the increase in the budget, the operational budget? Last year was like seven percent or something, what what is the increase in the business budget?
Or just operation?
Operation budget, yeah.
Yeah, um. Uh, I don't have that at my fingertips, I should, and I don't, do you have that, Andrea?
I do, it's five point six percent.
Yeah, thank you.
Better than seven. So I did, I I'll start, I did a lot of pushing last week, uh, two weeks ago on the headcount. Um, and just, I'm glad the staff is here, the reason I do that is because it's mostly administrative headcount. Um, and I I think we need to always challenge that very vigorously. I especially think we need to challenge it in times when the overall economy is, shall we stay challenging right now? Uh, you know, you listen to the news and you hear, you know, are we gonna go into a recession or not? Those are not the times typically when adding administrative headcount is a good thing to do. I think, so just the big picture, um, you know, we we tend to look at the budget line item by line item, line item by line item, because that's how we have to approve it. But I just ask that we step back and think about the repercussions. Um, if next year the housing prices don't go up, the assessments don't go up, and, you know.
It's not, it's not those prices or assessments that affect it, it's new construction.
New construction, whatever, the housing environment, if you're in a recession, that housing environment impacts, you know, what we can levy, right? So I just think we need to be careful about adding administrative headcount. Um, when it comes, so each staff member sent a, you know, a letter, et cetera. Um, which one do you wanna talk about first?
So we've got Jen and and Andrea here, why don't we talk about the, the whole move to the finance director and and the county clerk? Which would also serve the, you know, it'd be a sweet position for the treasurer's office and assessing office as well.
I have Director Hamilton.
I guess on that particular role, um, I saw Andrea's, thank you Andrea for the memo. Um, it was very detailed, my question is if, and I fundamentally agree that the finance area all needs to be in one place, makes total sense. What I'm struggling with is the need to add an employee um at a lower level to make that happen. I'm not understanding why we can't in the near term have some sort of a contract position um to cover that need until things settle down, a new, you know, administrator gets to come in here and put his or her take on um on the staff. So that's my main question.
Um, I have worked under a finance department structure in the past, it is definitely streamlined. Um, there's, I mean, I don't want to tell you the law, but I've heard a lot of discussions on Monday night, and it's very detailed. Um, I collected a bill for five dollars and one cent today, and twenty-eight cents in interest from this person, and I'm all about the detail, there's a lot of and you're absolutely right about the uncertainty of the future for the, you know, the finance economic, whatever, all come, all the reason to have really good finance controls. The extra person would be Andrea's role changed drastically, it will definitely, you know, give you a lot for a management position. And that's going to trickle down to her assistant. When I think about it, you know, Biden's Department of Commerce last year, when I agreed to take on those collections eight years ago, it was boring and weightless. Now it's boring, weightless, launch, dingy, slip, kayak, transient dock, border, I mean, it's it's a lot more work. Also, the budget, how much bigger is that than eight, ten years ago when I decreased staffing levels in my office? So I feel like this might just be like I made some good adjustments, streamlined, bringing Andrea on was, you know, fabulous. But the amount of work being run through the finance chain now is definitely up, and we have not increased any any staffing level in a long time. But the amount of work being run through the finance chain now is definitely up, and we have not increased any, any staffing level in a long time. Um, I wouldn't be opposed to saying it would be. Perfectly multifunctional to start with a part-time, and then, you know, if need be, um, depending on how the finance department rolls out. And, and the role it plays, the things it fulfills for the new town administrator, whatever. It's easier to go from a part-time, you know, position to full-time than the other way, so.
Yeah, so, so I think, first of all, thank you very much for that, um, I. I didn't actually see scope, so you are referencing an increase in scope of work as part of the reason for this position.
Yeah.
Didn't actually see that in the documentation, so I appreciate you mentioning that, that wasn't something we saw.
I think you have a little mention in the backside of the memo about. More of the budget and financial planning responsibilities.
That's, that's different, not increase in scope, so I. I understand, I, I still think we just, going right to a full-time body, um, and making that an employee is. I mean, it's not a, a, a small cost, it's a, it's a commitment, the long-term commitment, pension, everything that goes with it. And given the type of role that it is, finance here is the same as the finance in the next town, and the next town, and the next town. This is an opportunity to try a contract position. Um, the other thing I would say is, I. As far as the structure goes, I would expect more, when it says here, um, you know, the finance director would take on more of the budget and financial planning, my expectation would be that that person would do. The budget and, and FPNA role and submit that. Those drafts to the town administrator, right now Greg, you do a lot of the FPNA work, okay? Cause you did it a few weeks ago, FinCon meeting where we were talking about the capital plan, uh, the facilities plans. You did a spreadsheet, I'm sure working with Andrea, but you were laying it, you knew all the details, and you were intimately involved in the creating of that financial plan. That should be the finance director's job, right? I guess I'm asking, cause it wasn't. This is a big role, and I didn't see the clarification in the accountability. Responsibilities that I would have expected to see, and also I didn't see anything mentioned on the automation. Finance department should be the most automated department in, in town halls.
There's a lot of automation in it, but in this Q and A, there's a lot of. In-person services as well.
Yeah.
And to your point about, you know, the administrative part-time, I'm partial to the employee, um. Nothing, because while in my office you need to be bonded, I need to give you the code to the door, I just feel like an employee is more vested. Than a part, you know, a contractual person, I don't plan on bonding contractual person, a vendor. Um, giving them the code to the door, I mean, they can come in and help us pose a hierarchical position, but. Yeah, I feel like if it's a new structure, finance department, we reorganizing the way things run, and again, you're right, we don't know how it will go. I feel finance director is the appropriate person to handle the budgeting and everything, we don't know what the new person will want to do, or how much of the finance preference they can handle, but. That is a good structure, and, um, it would be streamlined, it would be, it would be great here because we kind of. Operate very closely to that model anyway, it's something that we've been in discussions since. I don't know, six years ago Greg came to those department heads and said, I'm looking for a way to structure to streamline, and that was one I.
So, yeah, and I, like I said, I don't disagree with the finance director model, but when you talk about streamlining, it usually means less has headcount, not more. So that's, that's what, you know, so that's what I'm trying to understand, I, I can support a, a part-time. You know, to start, I really think we need to give the new town administrator an opportunity to. Way in, he or she may have other ideas on how to do things, and, and rather not box them in, I just.
It's, you're, you're. Financial, look, look, Andrea, please.
Thank you, um, I just wanna talk about the finance director piece of it a little bit, um, yes, I would like to take on more of that, uh, FPNA, as you put it, um. I don't have like a lot of bland with right now, um, like Jen said, like a lot of our scope has changed, we have automated a lot, um, which is now, which is why we've been able to go so long. Um, without, you know, really feeling like a huge impact, um. You know, we've had grant increases, um, we've had the collections increase in Jen's office, I also feel like the. Let's talk about, um, restructuring. And having less. Um, reporting to the town administrator, but it also, we were talking about the, in the operational audit, which I think is very true, that. Each department is kind of siloed, we do work very well together, the assessor, the treasurer collector and I, but having them like just have to report. To the finance director position, um, and make these financial decisions before it comes to the town administrator helps. The town administrator role in that way, and I think it benefits all the community, uh, the department heads as well. The other thing that would be is that I really need, and Jen also needs to, is our assistants become to move up. Um, we can't be like the single point of contact and single point of, um, different responsibilities for that, and then in order to do that, we really. Want to shift everything, we kind of need to have some kind of relief in a part-time or a full-time clerk in the office.
And like I said, I'll say it for the third time, I don't have a problem with the finance director structure, per se, I just. I think you have a lot, that's just me.
What do the financial committee think about this?
They, they endorse it.
For a full-time?
Yes.
Okay.
If they wouldn't.
So I've, I've, I've got a question, Andrea said, uh, a lot of the stuff has now got automated. Jennifer, you said you took over all of this water stuff. How much of that was automated? Yeah.
Our remaster is far from automated. It's been on our list.
So that's running into a lot of people at the front desk, including me.
Yeah.
Okay, and that, that, that really is a time.
It's only about nine hundred bills, I would say, out of the twenty five thousand.
Okay, all right, so we've gotta get things automated some way, so you've got some direct pay arrangement.
When I started, I think Cindy told me, when I started about thirteen and a half, thirteen and a half years ago, she said there were five people in our office and, and her.
So it's gone down, okay.
So it has obviously automated a lot in order for two people to be doing what five used to do, yeah.
Okay.
A lot of automated problems.
But still, still got a ways to go.
And I mean, I put in place, you know, it's definitely placed, you know, ways for auto pay, e-billing, these things have been in town for ten years, I've tried to promote them, but I don't send out flyers constantly. It's costly for one, um, but there are options available. When I see there are people, especially people who might live abroad most of the year, I do direct reach outs to them, and I let them know about the product, and try and get them on board with e-billing, the auto pays, things like that. And then.
Percentage of the residents?
I'd have to pull that report, it, it just goes up though, you know, when I started, there was. Eighteen people paying a line, and then it just, the pandemic helped drastically, obviously people had a line, and now a lot of people. So there's a lot of, um, shift to that, using of the e-billing and the auto pay, it's growing. Um, I try and send out little friendly notes about it here and there, and tick these newsletters here and there, but. Short of talking to every person, telling them the benefits.
So Greg, one thing to think about though, from a service team, and you have to tell me if this is allowed or not, when we have, um, services that require labor, okay? Um, are we allowed to add a fee to that, um, for the collections? Cause in, you know, collecting a fee by. A human being at the front window is more costly to the town than someone going online and.
Well, it's because you're already paying me to be here and staff to do the work, and I hear a lot of complaints when people come up and wanna use their car in line, and they're not happy with the fee, they have to pay Visa. For the platform that is providing the.
Right, that's what I'm, I'm saying, we're incentivizing the wrong behavior.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah.
So I was just asking if there was a way to take that.
So you just put your bank in there, and there are some people that are reticent to do that, in fact, there are a lot of people that are.
Yes, exactly, I mean, online.
But then there's not, then there's no fee, it's just automatic transfer.
A lot of people still like to pay in, it is just an ACH, it's not a, like when you do your online banking with your private bank, it sends a check, it's an ACH.
Well.
Um, yeah, people, and of course, they don't wanna pay the fees to Visa or Mastercard, you pay it when you go to a restaurant, but you don't see it, you pay it when you go in.
That was a different question I was asking, that was, it was about paying the fee. If they're physically here, I think.
I don't know the answer to that.
I think we need to, for future budgeting, I know you won't be here, but I think we need to look at the revenue side of this, we need to be incentivizing people to. Use the tools that are available, and we're incentivizing it backwards.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Okay, well, nevertheless, so that's, that, that's been a driver for making you busier than you'd like to be. Or that would normally be, or in, in the office, constantly having to take checks, and then, there's a manual activity associated with all of that, somebody's gotta deal with that.
Not necessarily, I mean.
Well.
You can have issues with your online downloads too, they drop people, they don't, you know, they have their hiccups for sure, that can't be explained. Those can be very time-consuming to fix, particularly when they're done, you're trying to work with a third-party vendor who's having trouble identifying what happened with that transaction, and I go deep behind the scenes, and. Two days later I find the answer, but once you do it once, okay, now the next time will take half as long, the time after that will take ten minutes. So it's a learning process all around.
All right, so.
The manual part and the automated.
Really, really.
I think we've said always.
I think we have.
That's, that's okay.
I, I would like actually a vote on this, um. Asking the select board whether we endorse a full-time, um. Accounting clerk.
I would like to make one more comment on that, okay, and, I, you know, I'll say, I endorse that, but I think we need to broaden the portfolio of the accountant clerk somehow to perhaps. Take in some of the personnel issues that was a factor that was brought up in the operations review, and I know there are some things on the personnel end of things with regard to benefits, et cetera, that kind of fall into the financial area.
I handle all payroll and benefits.
All right, well, maybe we can take some of that off.
Possible for this person to work in both the treasurer's and the accounting office?
Depending on what permissions they have for the software as an other, so cannot be collecting and then posting to the GL.
Separation duties.
Yeah.
All right.
Absolutely.
I'm looking to add that to the description.
I mean, payroll, you know, personnel benefits, it's a lot, cause the, there's twenty percent more full-time staff, probably, or. Staff in general than when I started thirteen and a half years ago, the needs, the budget, everything just has grown, so. Having decreased staff at one point, you know, I'm a little bit maxed, but I'm handling it, a lot of the, um, what we hear too is. You know, what I consider HR function and payroll and benefits, so there's HR's policy and procedure and, you know, all that, and then payroll benefits is your vendors, your insurance, if it's on your paycheck. It's me, if it's an F M L A issue or a discipline issue or harassment issue, none of that is in our offices already.
Okay.
It's already being handled by Michelle Maloney or the HR.
Okay, is there, do we have a motion?
No, motion for what?
Move the, 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 the select board approves the hire, the addition of a. Accounting clerk, full-time.
Okay, yes.
There's a second.
Second.
Okay, for the discussion. Jeff?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Kathy, no, Anne says yes.
John says yes.
Okay, and the other position?
Assistant to the town clerk, which is for the part-time position, half-time, and the request is to go to that full-time position.
So, um. This one here, um, I read Christine's memo, um, didn't really give me much. Didn't really give me, uh, you know, warm and fuzzies on that, so I went back and looked at the recording. Of the FinCon where she went, did a full presentation and talked to FinCon about why she wanted to do that. I thought her story was, um, compelling, because what she said basically was, it's about coverage of. The office, she's constantly interrupted, and when she has to leave or gets interrupted, she can't get her job done, or, you know, a resident comes there and there's no one at the window. That is a direct benefit to the residents, so I am, I am comfortable with that, however, I do think you need. Somebody needs to look at the optional services. That are in that office, because during her presentation to the FinCon, um, what she mentioned was, I keep getting it, uh, interrupted, we had notary day, I think is what she said. Every, there was one day when everybody was in there asking for things to be notarized, that is an optional service, it's not required by law, we probably have other optional services. And if we do, we should be charging for those to offset the cost of this increased staffing, okay? We don't have to have the taxpayer. No, pay the entire load, okay, and we're not doing that, we need to start doing that, so I support, um. The increased hours for the town clerk, but I would ask that we look at charging for the optional services to offset the cost.
Right now, do we notarize for free?
Yes.
Yeah, we should be charging.
We should be charged, and it's, that's the only one that comes to my mind, cause it's a great service, and I used it two times in the past six months, but. We probably do other things that are optional, that we do it for free and suck it up, and the taxpayer pays for it, they don't really have to do that. With that note, do we support? The full-time for the town clerk's office? I see not. Okay. Let's move on. What should we be looking at next?
So, the.
Ah, yes.
And, uh, yeah, chief, chief and Neil is I want.
All right, good evening. Um, I'm, no, I've presented to you multiple times on this, as have previous chiefs, um. The workload, at least the administrative workload of the fire department, in addition to calls is ever increasing, especially with some of the construction going on. The increased needs of our residents, um, which is becoming more evident, uh, the more. Interesting construction goes on, uh, has been time-consuming, in addition to being a, you know, twenty-four, seven, three hundred and sixty-five, um. Day organization, it's very difficult to cover, uh, all those calls, especially on the overnights when additional staff is needed. Um, so this person, uh, primarily role will be fire prevention, um, which will semi be offset, um, we'll be presenting to you, uh, the next month or so, once. Uh, your schedule calms down a little bit, about increasing our fees, as well as increasing a fire, um. Permitting fee, which is currently, uh, no one pays for our inspectional services when it comes to building permits, it's just a lot, uh. Rolled into the, uh, building permit fee, but separating those out, uh, based upon the complexity of, uh, these dwellings that we're beginning to see. And the time it takes to research laws, uh, and regulations with that, um, as well as coverage for me, uh, to give me a little bit of a break and not be going twenty-four, seven.
That's good, I think you got a lot of the challenges that town's clerk has, except that you, you have the problem twenty-four, seven. They not so much, but you're public facing and. Got a lot of stuff to do.
Yeah, and, you know, and the environment's changed, and we just looked at the, you know, brush fires that we had this past fall, uh, if you look at the forecast, looking for the spring, it's not looking much better, even though we just had two inches of rain. Um, so I think things are gonna get much worse before they get any better.
Um, this person would be on the same, essentially the same schedule as you? Then.
Uh, my, uh, my goal would be to put them on, I, I do eight to four, Monday through Friday, uh, this person would be on four ten-hour days. Um, which would coincide with our shift work as well, um, so if we can utilize them, uh, in that capacity, uh, to optimize, you know, the finances of the fire department, we certainly will. Um, you know, what, obviously, there's gonna be some flexibility in their hours based upon, if I'm away over a weekend and they're covering things like that, but. The goal would be to make the job enticing to people to take, um, and, you know, four ten-hour days would be a little bit better, uh, than the Monday through Friday, eight to four.
One. Good. Okay.
So that wraps up the budget, obviously the school is still outstanding, um, are the. Various planning boards. Proposed any amendments on them? Or, we can walk through, or, uh, Mark is here to walk through them, if you like.
Okay, um. I think we probably got to do that. I think we probably got to do that.
So, I'm going to just walk through the various.
There's, there, there is a PowerPoint. But do you want to use it or?
Oh, the summary.
Yeah, if you'd like to, I'll, I'll go through it quickly.
Is, is that available?
If not, I can turn the floor.
Yeah, it's just easier for people who aren't here and miss a word or do, if we have, I'm sorry.
We're going to start right now.
Okay. So the planning board, uh. We've been working on, uh. Some zoning article changes, um, and we have, uh, seven that we submitted, uh. Uh, to your board last week that we discussed in the previous meeting as well. Uh, the first article is, or well, I'll just run down them. Associate members, the planning board does not have an associate member. Uh, there's been a change to the state law as it pertains to accessory dwelling units. There's a, a, a right for people to, uh. Be able to construct an accessory dwelling unit of 900 square feet. So, uh, we have a bylaw that regulates that as well as one for slightly larger accessory dwelling units. Um, we also have a short-term rental prohibition. That, um, we have drafted for accessory dwelling units. Um, we have a floodplain bylaw update that needs to be re-adopted. Uh, we have. Uh, to expand the applicability of site plan review, many things all through the cracks. Um, so just a more comprehensive, uh. List and, uh, the introductions of the zoning bylaws were proposing to delete because it's. More informational, uh, than regulatory. And so, draft is the list that I just ran through.
Do we suck it?
Associate members is the one that's up next.
So the, uh, so for more detail, the associate members right now, the planning board does not have an associate member. Um, to act when someone has to, is unavailable or. Conflict interest.
Something carries over across an election and.
Yes, as, as last year, exactly. So there's, there's many reasons why when an associate member, uh, might be, uh, useful to have. Uh, the planning board discussed this and they decided that they, they would like to have two associate members appointed jointly with the select board. And that they would be, uh, for two-year terms, uh, there would be staggered, uh, but. If this passes, we would appoint one for one year, one for two years, and then someone, uh, every, it would be two-year terms thereafter.
Any questions?
So these people attend meetings when there are issues where there are conflicts or for whatever reason, somebody has to recuse themselves or is sick or, I don't know.
Exactly.
He's not there.
Exactly. And then, uh, you know, that person would.
But not, but not there all the time?
Well, no, so ideally that person would attend all the planning board.
That's my question. Alright.
Okay, so, um, they would only be, uh, eligible to vote on special permits.
Right.
So if we didn't have anything as a special permit, then we necessarily have to be there, but I think. Just for continuity and for learning the job and, and really understanding the, all the other things the planning board do, does. Um, it would be, it's generally helpful for the planning, uh, the associate member to be there for all the meetings.
Okay, so that's an expectation for the people that get appointed to this slide.
That's correct.
Okay.
Questions, others? Okay.
Uh, the next one is the.
I, I assume that we generally.
General, the only question I was questioning and I think I resolved it is, uh. An appointed. Person, uh, appointed person is going to potentially vote on something that an elected official. Would normally be voting on. Alright, there's a disconnect here. Uh, I know that we, one of the vacancies we appoint. That's how I kind of reconcile this, okay? But I was concerned a little bit about how much. How active this associate member would be. Alright, given the fact they weren't elected to, and they're going to be acting in concert as acting a bit like.
We have so many people on the FinCom, right?
The Congress has entirely appointed and, and.
The only time the associate votes is when someone else has stepped down.
That was an alternate on the ZB ECO. I understand the concept and it makes perfect sense.
I, I thought this was essentially the coverage for special permits to make sure they don't get delayed. Is it anything more than that? If they get delayed, they are destructively approved. Okay, that, well, that's my understanding. They, their, their purpose, their, really, their only purpose is to make sure that special permits. Don't, you know, are efficiently adjudicated and not delayed because of an absence of.
If that's their only role. Again, I can, I can.
Yeah, but to your point. In regular planning board members outside of this associate arrangement. Could resign or just whatever, you could appoint planning board member who would be a planning board member and then be voting anyway, without even. Any associate member.
I just, I had to reconcile.
Yeah. Okay, the next one shows up on the screen. Um, is the. Regulation of, um, state mandated ADUs.
That's right. So it's, uh, we need to comply with the state law. The state law overrides our existing. Accessory dwelling unit by law. There are things in there that we can't enforce. Such as, uh, requirements for a special permit, having, um. You know, the owner live in one of the units, et cetera. So, um. So we would, uh, this by law would comply with that also. Obviously, there's a need to increase housing across the Commonwealth, which is why they passed this. Um, and, uh, by having it, uh, kind of as a right. Uh, hopefully people are coming in for permits and have it inspected and will ensure that they are safe units. And, um, uh, we want to ensure that we prohibit short-term rentals in ADU and that's for, uh. By definition, less than 30 days, less than a month. So, um. Uh, so our, um, the, the state law. Um, allows smaller ADUs, which is 900 square feet or, um. Less, or, or half of the main unit, whichever is smaller by right. Uh, we would delete our existing, um. ADU by law, which one of them talks about 80 employees in garages are accessory buildings in our other ADU by law. Those would be deleted. Um, the standard ADU, we call them standard instead of protected, that's 900 square feet or less. And large would be up to 1,200 square feet. Um, you felt there's some very large stage, but maybe big outbuildings that could be an ADU. And we can require the large ones to be by special permit.
So there are two articles, one for standard ADUs and one for large ADUs.
Correct.
Which would be voted on second.
Yes. And, um, again, we forget the short-term rentals. So, um, so our standard ADU by law would be consistent with the state law. And it has to be a self-contained housing unit, um, the size is half the gross floor area of the principal dwelling and 900 square feet, which is smaller. Um, on the same lot. Uh, subject to the dimensional requirements of the district, if you're going to add on to the building for that. Um, it has to maintain a separate entrance. And, uh, it's in by right, by state law in any district where we allow single-family homes. So the only. District we can prohibit is in the LCD because we do not allow single-family housing in the LCD. And so, um. Uh, within a half a mile of the MBT, or MBTA train station cannot require parking space for that unit. Uh, but outside, if we adopt this bylaw, we can require one parking space for the, um. Uh, the standard accessory dwelling unit. So the large dwelling units. So, yeah, oh, yes.
I had to try and try and get.
Yes, I get.
It's, it's, it's hard to remember everything.
Yes.
At the end. Any questions on the standard ADU? Okay.
Okay. So back to, to the, uh, large one, again, it has to be self-contained housing unit. It's half the. Square, uh, gross floor area of the principal dwelling or 1,200 square feet, whichever is smaller. Um, it has to be on the same lot as the principal dwelling, subject to all the dimensional requirements, maintaining a separate entrance. Um, and. We would only allow it in certain districts, A, B, C, and E. We would not allow it in the, uh, districts that currently allows. Two families, which is the key districts because those people can come in for a special permit for it. Um, and then, uh, it would need a special permit, so it's not by right. And, um. So there are some extra special term requirements. Uh, they have to comply. Have to be. Either in paying building or an accessory building, uh, if they're constructing a new accessory building after, uh, the day the town meeting that. Accessory building needs to comply with the primary building setbacks. Because these are large units, but if you have something pre-existing, that's okay. Um, ADUs are not, so you can only have, you can't have a large ADU if you have a standard size ADU. We have one, um. You have to comply with our, uh, parking, regular parking requirements. So you don't get to pass on, um. Not having a parking space. Um, and, um, they're only allowed, uh. On lots with single-family dwelling. So you can't have a standard and a large. So.
Questions on large ADUs?
I have, uh, one question. Well, actually two.
Not three.
Sorry. Uh, so we have to allow large ADUs by right also? No, we don't. No, we do not have to allow anything over the 900 square. And then my second question is, I know we were talking about curb cuts. So if you're going to require the amount of parking. What happens if that property requires a second curb cut to achieve that? So what is, we say in here, you can, you can only use one curb cut. So you have to continue to use the primary entrance to the property. I suppose you could relocate it and close off another, it's a better entrance because of your second. You have a bigger side yard that you want to have four cars instead of the two that own, that are on this side. Right. Um, you know, that's, that's something to do, but the property still would only have one. Thank you.
Was that three?
No, I only. Only two.
Okay.
I only bought two.
Alright, if you have a large ADU, you can't have a small and vice versa, correct?
Yes.
Do these rules say that? If, I, I think, okay, just. Wasn't, wasn't sure. And large ADUs can be part of the main home.
Yes.
Okay, was there some reason that they could not be or just because of size, some people would say. That's there, but it doesn't necessarily have to be. They can do whatever they want. Okay.
Okay. Kathy?
Um. Uh, first of all, I'm glad the planning board lowered the, uh, square footage from 1,500 to 1,200. That was going to be my sticking point, so I'm glad they changed that. Um, question for Greg. So. I like the fact that we're not going to allow short-term rentals for these ADUs either type. They're operating under the premise that short-term rentals are for 30 days, but our bylaws don't define a short-term rental as 30 days. We haven't made those changes yet. Do we have to do anything to our general bylaws so that that 30-day ban is? In effect? Know what I'm saying?
Right, so no.
Okay.
So that the zoning will cover the ADUs.
Okay.
Um. Everybody else is under the general bylaw of the others. Less sort of defined.
But we have to fix and have it fixed. Okay, thank you. That was my question.
I'm going to do the comparison or.
Yeah, here we have.
That needs to be updated. Still says 1,500 square.
Yeah, this is just a summary.
Yep.
And this one is.
This is, this is, in case the other two don't get approved.
Yes.
We still have a prohibition about ADUs.
Right.
So we would pass over this one if the other two got approved. Either one?
This, this by law, yeah. Well, no, if the standard, uh. Um, if the standard doesn't pass, it would pass over the large one. As well as, uh.
Oh, I see. Yeah.
But if the standard passes, we would, again, we'd see what happens with the large and we could pass over this one.
Yeah.
Uh, because this defines ADUs, but the same definition, which refers to the state laws also in the standard by law.
One plane.
Floodplain by law, floodplain by law, um, needs to be updated. It's been years since we've updated. The planning board had started talking about updating it about a year and a half ago, but then the MBTA. Um, kind of shook up a lot of their time. So now we're under, um. Deadline to pass this by, by July. So our, our. Town meeting has to, uh, uh, pass this, uh, in order for people to continue to get flood insurance. It updates definitions, some basic rules, and, but it refers, the, the, the real enforcement is the building code or. Uh, patents, regulations, et cetera, within a floodplain district. So. Um, and our, uh, version was just approved by the state who asked to review and approve it, and then we have to submit it to FEMA after town meeting.
That doesn't sound like anything that we're going to be able to improve.
No, pretty much. We want people to be able to obtain flood insurance.
We gotta do it.
Okay.
Yes. And if you want to look up the flood maps, they're online. Um, so the introduction to the zoning bylaw, um. So we have a two-page introduction to the zoning bylaw, which is more informative. It's not regulatory, doesn't set any rules. Uh, and some of those, um, uh, uh, that information is, is inaccurate. So.
And having to, having to go to town meeting to change every time something else.
Change.
State law change is much better to have the.
Less is more.
And so, so our plan is to take the, the information that's good and put it on the planning board website so people can look it up and, and, uh. They, it's informative. And then the, uh, the last one is the, uh, expand the, uh. Well, applicability. Yes. Of site plan review, um, currently we have a very small, um. Requirement, yeah, for, for site plan review. Many things would fall through the cracks. So we kind of, uh, this thought. Although we don't have a lot of applications for site plan review and a lot of. Big commercial developments. Modus size ones. Modus size ones. Uh the planning board thought it would be good to add uh some specific criteria, things that would kick it off, such as like if you're putting a drive-through facility, you know, if you want to drive up window, or that can change traffic patterns within a place as well as entering and exit. You might not be building or adding more parking, which is why it might not kick in today. But you know, that's just one example. So we have uh nine new criteria.
And we've all seen them. Does anyone have questions on expanding the range of site plan? Okay.
And um I mean, we had this reviewed by council, uh re-reviewed from the version that I sent out to the board. The planning board met earlier today and approved uh some minor adjustments in some of the language based on council's opinion. So um that's where we're at.
Hey, somebody somewhere. Good.
Okay.
Thank you, guys.
That thank you. That was very complete presentation.
Welcome.
You heard. Our commenter.
He's good.
What do we do then?
There's a hand up.
Oh, okay. Sure.
Make sure who that is.
Did you have your hand up on you and let us know who you are, please?
Oh. No. Yeah, it does make this one to three. I'm not sure who. Might be a by mistake.
Okay.
Uh so that brings us to the three citizen petition articles.
Right.
Um one is uh the non-binding vote to ask the Board of Health to rescind the um it's called generational tobacco use prohibition. Those born after 2002, 2004, I think it is.
January 1, 2004.
Yeah, 2004, yeah. Anyone born up to 2004 would not be allowed to purchase tobacco. That's so that is slated to take effect this April. Uh as a new bylaw that the Board of Health passed. So this uh citizen petition article asks to rescind that, but as I say, it is it is a non-binding article um based on the authority of the of the Board of Health. So that's number one. A second one is um the prohibition of using certain redendicides. And you.
Yeah.
You know that well, so if you want to talk a little bit about that.
Okay. Yeah, um we can't directly forgive them in town. We have to get permission from the state. This is the this is the first step. We go to the state and say, will you allow us to impose more protections um than are allowed to towns? When the state gets around to voting on that, um then we will, then I will come back with another citizen petition asking to actually do it. So.
This is just a request to go.
This is a request to be permitted to do something.
As they run out of towns and.
Yes.
Yeah, um Brooklyn comes to mind, but there are uh maybe a dozen um.
Rockport has it on there.
Rockport has it on uh at Rockport is working on banning them within town. Haven't made any effort to go to the Board of Health and see what we were actually using in town. That's a little dead aside, but um yeah, there um there's a move to expand them statewide, but um this each town that moves toward it um is more of a state by law.
So would this apply to commercial pest control people?
Only commercial pest control. These poisons are, these chemicals are not allowed to be used by homeowners.
Most of their not in products you buy at the hardware store.
No, no, they're not even products that you buy at the hardware. And the.
The third one is the proposal to increase the fines basically on the noise ordinance. But the state law dictates those fines, the maximum fine that we can charge is $300 per offense. The petition article sought $500 and up. Um so my understanding is that there will be.
Uh person who put the petition together has asked that CP pass over. That's the word.
That's the word. There's so.
Okay, um. The next article is the PBW discussion, and we start with public restrooms.
So quick and easy update there. Uh we have started reaching out to local businesses. Thanks to Debbie. Um we had a very positive conversation with the owner of Dunkin' Donuts, and they're willing to um make their restroom available to the general public um in lieu of water in Sewellville. So that seemed like a pretty fair deal, and so we will pursue that and get a letter of agreement and get some signage and uh talk to the chamber about putting out maps, that sort of thing. Uh we'd love to have one or two more, so we'll continue to reach out to uh to business owners to see if we can get uh one or one or two more lined up.
Dr. Bravo?
Uh we've been in touch with them.
Go trying.
Yeah. Certainly on the list.
Yeah.
So so I think. Short, sweet.
That's a good short one, but the other request was, I guess there's a bathroom here in Town Hall?
Yes.
Um conversation at the downtown improvement committee was it's the town best kept secret. So how do we improve signage or?
Yeah, I think working with the chamber to get it on a map.
Even in the like when you're coming through the front through a town hall.
Yeah, we can get better signs on the in the building for sure.
Yeah, that's what I, I don't think I've ever seen a sign and didn't know it was there myself.
Maybe you sign on the door saying.
Yes.
We're in the front.
Yeah.
Yeah.
If you could add that sign, I think that's those are two good short-term solutions.
Yes. That we can do.
It kind of covers both ends of town.
Right, that's been the discussion is you need it in both places. Okay. Um.
Actually, we talked about, I'm sorry, it was discussion about a long-term.
Right, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, and with that, I know that uh we've been kicking around how the master's office, having other restrooms, and by doing that, we could probably get entire grants or close to everything paid for. It kills two birds with one stone. So at this point, I'd like to, I guess there was a harbor math is steering committee a couple of years ago.
On that top, yes.
I'd like to talk about reconvening that. Right, uh and narrowing back down and trying to determine, you know, we know where you stand on the harbor master's office. Uh and just stop really looking at that.
So just a question, clarification. Um is that different than the harbor management plan we asked another committee to do and different than the harbor advisory committee? Right, two harbor-related committees, and I'm just trying to understand the tie.
My understanding is that there was, there was one function, one function only.
There was.
The harbor master's office.
Yeah, so it's an ad hoc.
Seems like it could.
A task force.
Could be part of the harbor management plan.
But whatever it is, let's get it started.
Yeah, I I would, I think it, we shouldn't do anything outside of that, so I like the idea of getting a task force. I'm just getting it done. I would not want it completely separated from the harbor management plan and all the other committees.
You can structure it any way you want. I think it's time that we revisit this in our.
Especially while there's money out there.
Yeah, when you say grant the grant money to in terms of examining where it should be and downstream of that.
Um yeah, that, well, I have to talk to Brian. I I know that, I know that they're dollars. Well, there probably some planning dollars.
Okay.
So uh we had a steering committee uh for for just the discussion of a harbor master office, whether or not it would be feasible, where it would be feasible if it were, and what the recommendation would be to the select board. That select committee was far down the road to making a recommendation when we had the failure at Tuck's Point of the ramp access to the floats, and that was a million-dollar project. So it was decided that that would take precedence over a harbor master office. So this would just be reformulating that group and deciding how best to approach the select board with the idea of putting an office down there with public bathrooms.
So I I'm looking back at our action item list, and it says that the harbor management plan task force is going to be reviewing a draft plan with us on April 7. So could your first action be to go check with them and see if they already had some thoughts? Just so we don't have two separate sets of ideas.
Sure.
No, Gar Morris says his hand up.
Please unmute yourself and go ahead.
Uh I'm Gar Morris on 11 Jersey Lane. Just a point of interest. The library, under the guidance of David Lumston, came in and said they were going to do some planning and architecture and said that bathrooms was on their list, and we suggested maybe uh that uh public access to those bathrooms, maybe even from outside, not through the library, might be a great idea. They said that sounds good to them, and I believe they said they were gonna, they were gonna pursue that.
Awesome, guy.
Great.
I would assume that when the when the library is open, I assume that you can walk in and use the bathroom.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, she can.
It's not accessible. It's not.
It's not a great bathroom, but yes.
A lot of reading material.
It is.
How did they get Dunkin?
Thank you, Gar.
I didn't hear that part.
You're welcome.
Maybe notes on on the bathrooms. Forster Road Waterline.
So there's been discussions over the last couple of years about the, about that water line. In the town's position that it is a private line, it's serving half a half a dozen homes. Um you know, it's sort of evolved hodgepodge manner, it seems. I haven't really got the complete detailed history of it all, but um you can tell that it was just sort of added on and added on as as homes were built. So certainly, um some of the residents would would love to see a new new town line put in. That's um so it's not something we have budgeted yet. It uh like I said, it is a private line.
Can I ask a question? How many situations like this do we think we have in the town? Like how many private roads or private water lines do we have? Is this the only one, or is it one of 20 or?
I think one on Jersey Lane that fits a similar profile. Those are the two off the top of my head.
At the other end of this line, connected to this at all.
University land on off a summer.
Oh, university. Yeah.
Yeah, I'm not. Time to take a journey.
That that's one of my questions is, obviously, if we did something here, you'd have to do it for everybody who is in that. You can't play favorites, right? So the decision is, do we do it for everybody? And I'm just trying to understand how big everybody is.
Yeah, the interesting coolest point would be another interesting one.
That that's why I feel I don't really have enough.
I think we consider that a town line. Don't we, or not?
I I don't feel we have enough information to deliberate. I don't feel we have enough information to deliberate here because we can't play favorites.
Sure.
So I would want to know, how many of these situations do we have?
Yeah, how much is it going to cost?
And how much would we have to do it for everybody because we can't play favorite then I.
Well, it could be done with a betterment so that, yes, we pay upfront, but they pay for the whole line over time. That would be the reasonable way to handle.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. Then the town isn't paying.
It's a hook up, right? And that regard.
Yeah, I thought the question was, does the town pay period, not do we just pay upfront and have them reimbursed?
Yeah, I had this perception too, I guess. So if you thought we guys are better than, you probably have to agree to that. Yes, that's a, that's a, that's a different animal.
Did I read that you would, if there was one concept, that you'd be sharing the costs with them?
Yes.
And I I think that obviously, they knew what they were getting into when they.
Yeah, I mean, you're just opening up a can of worms. I have a, you know, you're going to come to my condo complex of our water line. You know, brakes on our pride road. I mean, oh, okay, I'll remember that boat.
Yeah, I didn't realize that was part of the options.
But yeah, betterment sounds.
Is is it, has, have people been making noise about this recently? I mean, this is a topic a year ago.
Was it over a year? Was it a year?
It was a while back.
About it for two years, off and on, and and you know, we're supplying water, we have meters there.
Yeah. Well, I'm going to be revisiting meters again real soon. That was, that was Lee. That was Lee Delicar. He he came here and he was.
Ricky was still here.
He was herding cats, as I recall. It is.
Yeah, because he had different homeowners.
Fellow homeowners.
Well, well, the other thing mentioned though, in in the notes here, um I think, Greg, you mentioned that when we redo the Bennett Street line, that that will help them anyway. Is that?
We we certainly project that there will be some increase in pressure, just as that line gets inverted.
So that's the town, I mean, that's a town line.
My mind's at schedule.
Two years. It's not. By 26 or 27, 27 will be tapped, so it'll be 28.
Would it be?
I mean, it'll be an incremental. It's not going to solve. That's still going to be an undersized line.
Yeah.
So what is the typical um timeframe that the homeowner for the betterment, like what period of performance is?
Usually it's a.
10 years.
10, 15, or 20-year benefit. That's, 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 people have the option, how long they want to stretch it out.
Do we ever put boundaries on that so we get our money back faster?
Um, yeah, you can, you can set the limit.
Okay, so may maybe we could ask for the finance committee's recommendation? I don't know.
So I mean, look at the example here. What do they have, 10 homes involved or something like that?
I'm not even sure it's 10 at last.
I'm just doing the math. It's a lot of money.
$100,000 a house, yeah.
Yeah. Why don't you pay it back to me in four years?
That's what I'm saying. As far as the period of performance, what's a reasonable? Would we want to get the finance committees?
Look other.
If we're, if we, if we were to agree to outlay, you know, six or $800,000, that's a big expense.
I understand the value of the money there and all that.
Saying they usually advise on financial matters, so.
So as we, as far as we know, maybe Lee is still immiserating with his neighbors, or you don't know.
Oh. I haven't talked to him in.
Been a while. He's probably in Florida. He's in Florida half the time, I think.
No, it's just.
I so. Best drink.
Would it make any difference in the cost if it went at the same time as Bennett Street?
Right, so typically, we would try and add, make it an add alternate to the Bennett Street as the basement. So the contractor, when they're bidding, would know, okay, we're doing that, and which is. add, make it an add alternate to the Bennett Street as the basement. So the contractor, when they're bidding, would know, okay, we're doing that, which is you know, probably a three or four million dollar job. If we just add on this, you know, marginal piece of a water line on this side street, we're already there anyway. So we would get to see, you know, some economy of scale there. So that would be the best possible time for us to do it.
And that's, that's two to three years out.
The general provisions too.
Correct, exactly. So it's all, it's all one moment.
Yeah.
Makes sense.
Okay.
That's, that's kind of the best scenario, best case for us. The way construction prices are. Two or three years from now, it could be more.
So my feeling is that there's a consensus that offsetting the whole cost with a betterment um is the preferred way to go. And that there's advantage to waiting until twenty-eight on the Bennett Street.
Unless they make noise between now and then.
Private line, they're welcome to.
They can do that, yeah.
You get the new harbor master office, the shower, make a shower down here.
That's not nice. About safety to fire. Hey. Let walk, snow maintenance. There were a lot of complaints after the particularly nasty storm. And the suggestion that we about to buy along, it wouldn't require people to shovel when they find their houses.
Not really a fan of this. I'm all right with, you know, if you want to put out there, hey, help out and be the sidewalk, but natural bylaw. I don't know. I don't, I mean, we have elderly people here. What are they gonna do? Have to hire somebody to shovel their sidewalk in front of their house? And then some people, the DPW is doing it. So they don't have to do anything.
Yeah.
I don't know. True.
We get clarification on what what it is that you do. Now.
Right.
Yeah.
You know, all of our storm response, you know, is typically mostly DPW personnel and then we have a few hired contractors depending on the storm. Uh, so, you know, this, this particular storm, you know, in, I think it was President's Day uh, or President's Day weekend, uh, you know, it was kind of one of those, you know, kind of perfect storm, uh, you know, that was essentially it was a longer duration storm. There was about seven, eight inches of heavy snow uh, followed by at least an inch or so more of rain. Uh, basically had nowhere to go because of all the snow that had gone down before it. Also, um, you know, I look back at, you know, time sheets and our storm reports and, you know, we had several responses the prior two weeks. So even that Wednesday before this storm, we were doing off, off hour storm removal downtown and, you know, sidewalks, you know, on the, on the main streets. So our general response is, you know, we, we, our guys show up, we, you know, start out with the sand and salt. Then when it starts to heavy snow, uh, we'll, we'll start plowing. Uh, we kind of have, you know, team system, you know, but roads get the priority. Um, you know, when we can, we will send our sidewalk equipment out uh, during the storm, uh, you know, hopefully more than once. But sometimes, I'll be honest, depending on the storm and, you know, the intensity fluctuates over the duration of the storm, you know, we might not get out to the sidewalks until the end of the storm. And so the map that we put out a few weeks ago before this storm was, you know, essentially here's the main streets that will be there within twenty-four hours of the storm ending. Here's the one that we also kind of feel like we're responsible for, when our response will be, you know, within seventy-two hours of the end of the storm. And then I did put the pavilion on there. Um, yeah, depending on the storm intensity and duration, you know, this might be out the window and of course the next storm, that's what happened. Um, so, you know, it was unfortunate. I will say we were not alone. I, you know, there was front page news everywhere uh, around the Commonwealth from Western Mass all the way to Eastern Mass. So I feel like, you know, in a typical New England winter, we haven't had many in the last couple of years, but in a typical New England winter, we're gonna get one of those a year where it's just nothing we can do is gonna really help. Uh, I think that's where we were here.
Yeah.
But we did, we did spend a lot of time and a lot of effort on, on the sidewalks.
So I, I just want to thank you guys because actually I've noticed a difference on Lower Pine Street. So, um, it's been typical twelve years I've been here, only one side of the street gets done. Um, this past year, I actually could see the tracks that somebody made a pass through. Um, so I appreciate that. It wasn't climbing on ten inches of ice like I normally do. But I think there's still, um, questions as to, you know, do you have the proper equipment so that when the sidewalks are cleared you're in decent shape? I've never heard one complaint about the roads. I, I think, you know, team does an excellent job. You can see them out there pre-treating and everything. But I just wonder, um.
So, yeah, I know there's been a couple comments about the equipment and whatnot and the piece of equipment that we bought, I believe it was the twenty nineteen annual town meeting, was your standard sidewalk tractor that has V plow and a snow blower attachment. That was replacing an identical uh piece of equipment that was retired because it was twenty plus years old. So that, it was basically a one for one replacement. We have a backup piece of equipment, but it's a, it's a wheel machine, not a track, and so it's not as good of a solution. And if there's any downtime on the primary one, then we have that one as backup. And that other one has many different functions, you know, in the summertime and off, not, not including snow, which is the primary function of the primary piece of equipment. Um, so, uh, it's, it's not ideal because you can't get a person, they're, they don't make a smaller piece of equipment that a person can fit in. Uh, you know, obviously there's walk behinds, there's tractors that certain people have, but that's all we're talking about. This is a piece of equipment that you can get in and drive. Uh, so that, that's, you know, there's nothing on the market that I'm aware of that would help us in that situation. Uh, and it was, like I said, it was a replacement for what we had for previous twenty years. So, you know, I think, I think we're where we should be. Um, you know, there, there's always the, you know, for instance, um, you know, the guy will make the pass and then your contractor at your house comes by and blocks off the sidewalk that we just made the pass. And we just don't have the time or the ability to get back there and clear it again. You know, like I said, we'll try and usually, you know, the next daylight hours, you know, this was an epic storm uh, plus the holiday on Monday, but we were back out sanding and salting because of the, you know, the rain and the freezing temperatures the next day. Um, so there's really no opportunity for us to go back and clean up. Um, so, you know, again, it was just kind of a one-off instance for that, but I don't know that there's anything you know, based on our current staffing and our current contractor, uh, you know, what we would be able to do all that difference except, you know, obviously.
I think that the reason I think this came up, it was, it came up during the budget discussion at a FinCom meeting. So the, I mean, the question was, do we have the right equipment? Do we have enough in the budget to to clean the sidewalks to, you know, a little better, I guess?
So, yeah, like, exactly. I don't, I don't think there's, you know, it's not a staffing issue, it's not an equipment issue that we can easily solve. So, you know, could we, could we throw more at it? Could, could we, you know, offer double time on, you know, sidewalk if you're you know, doing something like maybe, but that's not really the way things operate. Yeah, I don't, I don't really have a better, better answer. So I don't, I don't think so.
You're fighting the environment is what you're fighting.
You are. And, and that was a snow rain freeze. You were in, you were in big trouble. That doesn't happen very often and when it does, it's very, very hard to deal.
So I, I, I just kind of follow up with that and just say, you know, we're doing the best we can. We, we see the ice there, we see the, you know, snow backs there and we will remedy to solve that, but you know, sometimes it just takes time and it takes sunlight and warm weather.
Have we ever like looked, um, outside of here just for best practices, just out of curiosity, like Minnesota or, you know, Canada, places that get real snow consistently, you know, um, I don't know if they have different equipment or different procedures, just curious.
I can't honestly say that. I've looked into, you know, the snow ops in Canada or Minnesota, but I will say, you know, we're talking about one storm event situation.
Well.
If it was happening every storm event, then I'd be definitely looking more.
Well, I, I just want to correct it. So in past years, that's why I complimented you on Lower Pine. Past years, Lower Pine has been a mess on one side consistently. And so.
I'll take your comment and, you know, I'll keep an a better eye on it maybe, but I would rather get the complaint in real time and fix it than you know, I, I think, I think it's fixable without you know, looking for an outside solution or, you know, hiring additional contractors. The problem really, you know, if you're looking outside for contractor help, you know, nobody's, nobody's buying the piece of equipment that we don't have just to use it for us once a year. Like, that's just not gonna happen. So you know, we're kind of at the mercy of what we have and what we can staff.
I think that we've lost sight of, of the discussion, which was a bylaw to shovel the sidewalks. And, uh, you know, I think the shop is, is, and the, the company's done the best job they can. Question is, are we gonna find people to not clean up the sidewalks? It's what it amounts to.
I'm, I'm, I'm looking at the map. And you got twenty-four hours, this is what you're gonna clear, and we all know pretty much what those twenty-four hour roads are. You've got blue, which is seventy-two hours, and then you have a number of selected streets which say property owner responsibility. And I said, I mean, it's Rosedale, it's fine. I mean, it's, it's, it's a few, few, just a few streets, not very many. Are they put in there? Do those homeowners knew they're supposed to do something? Because that's what we're talking about.
Yeah, probably not. Or, or.
You know, and it, it's not that they're major, you know.
Exactly, yeah. That, so we're saying we're probably not gonna get into it with our staffing and our, you know.
Wind of air.
If it's gonna get done, it's gonna be the homeowner's responsibility. What we're saying there. But yeah, I, I take the point.
Uh, yeah, so that's there, but it's there primarily for informational purposes and probably not. I mean, you're focused on the red and the, the red and the blue here.
Yeah, I mean, I guess I could have phrased it as not DPW responsibility, but, um, you know.
Well, we do have, and we have a lot of streets here where there aren't any houses.
Right.
But they go someplace. And of course, if you say, well, homeowner, you gotta shovel. I mean, I live in a community where you had to shovel in front of your walk, but that community was all built out by nineteen thirty. It's just house, house. Ev- everything is defined. There was no section of sidewalk anywhere that did not have responsibility. And.
So, you know, I, I don't think it needs to be so heavy handed as by law maybe, but there definitely should be more communication around the fact that, you know, if even, even I would say the ones that we do do, like I said, sometimes your contractor might come by after we're gone and block off the sidewalk. That happened on a couple of these storms.
All right.
And, you know, we're not out there finding contractors or, you know, anything like that, but you know, maybe some public notification and outreach on that for homeowners to tell their contractors and for, you know, to the extent that they're already hiring somebody, maybe they should include their sidewalk in front of their house. You know, especially if it's outside of our kind of core area. So I mean, education's not a bad thing. I just don't think it's something that's, you know, ever been highly debated, you know.
So I guess the question, I didn't even realize how far away from the downtown you do, um. Wow, I, I have heard that Ocean Street, um, I'm sorry, Summer Street, there's sidewalks on Ocean Street too near the beaches or is it just? Some.
There's a section between Coral Island and Black Beach.
Okay. So I guess the question I would ask is do we feel the DPW has the right scope? Um, are we asking them to do more than we should? I don't know. Uh, like I said, I've never lived in a community where the, the town removed the snow. Every place I've ever lived, it is the property owner's responsibility. So this is new to me. I mean, there's a lot of blue here. And it, you know, if, if you didn't have to do the blue, could you make passes around the red more often?
Well, we're not getting to those until after the storm. And we, you know, if, like I said, if, if we do notice like a spot that either, you know, we're not in or, you know, there was some other circumstance why we missed it. You know, we'll go back, but, you know, it's kind of the rule of thumb. And maybe, you know, there's plenty of times where we get complaints, you know, you missed my sidewalk and, you know, stuff happens and we go back. Say my sidewalk, they say, we missed, we missed the town's portion of the sidewalk.
I don't sense strong enthusiasm for a bylaw. Maybe.
I think you're right.
Maybe, um, we could encourage Tiffany um, or, or maybe even, um, you know, after a bad storm, a, a reverse nine-one-one, asking people to please clean up, help clean up.
I got a question, John. I guess you're shoveling out in front of your street?
No, I don't even have a sidewalk on my street. There, there, there's a small, small stretch of about twenty or thirty yards.
So there, I mean, there's a lot of black, um, on this map, there's, there's certainly quite a few sidewalks which are delineated as property owner responsibility.
Right.
And to your point, do they even know that? I, I think we're not, I'm certainly not ready to enact a bylaw because I don't think the homeowners that live on those streets understand it's their responsibility necessarily to remove the snow. We ought to probably, to your point, communicate that, you know?
I can tell you on my street, there's a large stretch of sidewalk that's owned by a trust that's out of state. So there's no way these people are gonna do it. There's no building there, it's just woods.
See, if there's no building, nobody's doing anything.
Right. But that's still a large, it's like half my street.
Okay, that's not an uncommon street in this town.
Right, so who's gonna do it?
You want to.
I do enough storm removal, I don't need any more.
You know, it's, uh, but we're into March here. I, my feeling is, is that I don't need to worry about this too much now, but I think it's appropriate next December when the storm, you know, once winter kicks in, there should be some sort of a note, this is something Tiffany can kind of help put together to say this is what's going on with sidewalk plows, there's a map here and here are maybe some suggested resident responsibilities with the black.
So, yeah, I, I made that map and it was kind of introduced with kind of a, you know, reminder about the blue lights and what that means in terms of parking, parking and stuff like that.
I, I, I think it needs to be at the appropriate time.
Be something that we need to do annually and then, you know, maybe there's some more work that goes into it in the fall.
Do we want to put that on our action list?
Yes.
So we don't forget.
Does it go that far down?
We can. And that way, I think it's a good timing. And then if there's anything we do want to do. Debbie, got it.
Friendship tree lighting time.
So maybe, maybe put it in for October. Yeah.
Oh, that's soon, okay.
Yeah, just, just. It's
We could use the Ball Town meeting as an opportunity to communicate.
Oh, that's a good time.
You know, so if you do it, no, just the, the whatever we're gonna do, you know, not a bylaw or anything. I'm just saying, um, if there's communications that we want to get out to residents, having that communication available and, you know, I hand out, you know, something like that would be, you know.
It even do with the text, like when I get the alert, you know, blue light special.
Yeah.
You know, when that text comes out, okay. Maybe another, maybe a second text show the apps. We have, we, we have the technology.
We do. We do. Yeah, uh, Central Street Crosswalk Communication.
So this is in relationship to crosswalk here.
Yeah.
And versus moving it west from Central. If it was in that location, um, a little further, further down, challenges the lack of the ADA accessibility to the curb. So. Chuck, you can.
Right, so there, there was a crossing there, um, seemed redundant to the one that, you know, is across here. This one here is more ADA compliant, although it's not totally compliant, but at least has the curb breaks and the ramps. Um, the one further up, I literally witnessed a elderly person with a walker that couldn't get her walker over the curb at that crossing. And so when that was repaved, I decided we're not putting the crosswalk back until we can make it ADA compliant. Uh, so when I was talking great about this, I was thinking that, um, you know, we are, I, I believe that we have additional capital in for Pleasant Street for that paving jump, which will make all of those crossings ADA and include all that. Um, I'd like to see where those bids come in. We'll be out to bid in the next couple of weeks. And, you know, this is all part of the road maintenance line anyway. Uh, so assuming there's enough money to make that further up ADA compliant, then I'll do it at that time as, you know, do it the right way. Uh, but I, I hate to just paint it for the sake of painting it. Uh, without.
Talking about the one in front of Morse Court.
Right.
The reasons all of us use that is because it has much safer sightlines.
Right. Um, so, you know, it, it is better, I think, that moving the arcing away from the crossing here will also make that better in terms of sightlines.
It helps, but it's because of the curve of Central that.
Yeah, I don't dispute that.
It's just really dangerous.
Typical, you know, typical mid-block crossings are less safe. You know, you want it at stop signs and more prominent intersections. So, you know, that's just kind of standard, but, you know, it's case by case. So I think that, you know, it's probably reasonable to put a crossing there, but I would not. An ADA accessible one.
So what would the timing of that be?
Uh, well, I think we'll be doing Pleasant Street in May, um, so potentially when, and it'll be, it'll be one contract, but typically the people that win these contracts are subcontractors doing the sidewalk and curving and all that. So, you know, they'll be doing Pleasant Street first when it comes to doing sidewalk and curving. Uh, and then I could potentially add that section uh, as a, you know, as soon as that subcontractor is done on Pleasant Street, they come down and do that, you know, something along those lines. So, you know, potentially we could have done May-June contract.
So spring would be ideal, that'd be great.
Yeah, I mean, we're not getting out there, you know, before they mobilize Pleasant Street, but yeah.
Yeah, no, that'd be great. And it's not just the sightlines, the curve of the road, it's the way the sun hits or where where blinds the drivers, all this stuff, you learn it when you walk it multiple times a day. Um, and, you know, I jaywalk across right at Morse.
I don't want to make, I don't want to make too much work for myself, however, uh, just from the rock at the Pine Street intersection, that's been a, you know, tips. At the point for several years, so.
Oh, that road.
Nothing I'm going to be doing, I'm not offering to do anything nearby.
Famous road.
Just saying, like, that's another area where the crossings are not ideal, uh, bigger correct solution is better.
No one is requesting any crosswalks there.
Well, they are requesting them, but they.
So who who is that?
You get people quite a bit of them.
Oh, God.
People.
I mean, mostly it's for crossing Pine Street, like across to the gas station, but like that's a very unsafe crossing.
It's very unsafe there, yeah.
The, now, I just want to confuse. Are we still going to eliminate the crosswalk at the corner by Bluebird?
In front of Seaside One.
That's a different question.
Uh, we were talking about eliminating that regardless of what we're going to do up the street on Central. Because we already have one crosswalk. We're going to get the crosswalk on the other side of the entrance into the uh.
Right, so I mean, the the timing for that to get done will be when we do the strength of street. Like, I did not paint it.
On the Culver Street.
The Culver.
Culver project, yeah.
So like, I'm not going to fix the curbing or do anything with the curbing until we do that project. And which hopefully will be within the next two years, uh, you know, hopefully we start it this year and finishes in two years, but the the idea is, you know, I'm not going to be able to make actual geometrical changes to that or, you know, remove the ADA ramps, like, I'm not doing any of that, so it's either leave it as it currently stands and just accept two or remove it all, you know, by remove it, I mean, I'm not going to paint it, so it's not the ideal crossing, but it's, you know, so technically there.
Would it be possible to remove the signage there? Maybe.
For?
Where the cross, for the existing crosswalk just. At the Culver, just.
Unfortunately, it's historic district, and I get in trouble when I put flashing lights or anything like that.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
So we kill kids instead of any. Yeah.
As it looks good.
Heart of a charm.
Well, I I did, I did notice that um, the police already put some of the safety sticks.
They put some, some various codes.
Well, no, the safety, the parking sticks.
That was for the hydrant, I think.
For the hydrants, they're.
Because it's illegal to park.
So, yeah, like I said, we we will paint the cross or the.
Parking.
The parking stalls and all that. If I do or do not paint the crossing as it currently stands, you know, but I can go either way on that.
I'm sorry, what's the timeframe for painting the parking?
We took it out in April, May, June.
Okay, so the spread, the spread we want to paint.
Yeah, town, yeah.
Okay, okay. But individual parking spaces like in front of Town Hall.
Right, we talked about, yeah. So the order more paint.
Trying to save parking in front of Bluebird.
Well, then we're getting rid of that, but it'll be after the Culver.
No, they're going to wait for two years until after the Culver work is done, okay.
Oh.
We were just talking about the loss of parking by the by the boot.
I think it loses one space there, correct? It's really right over the water.
If you have properly painted individual parking spaces, they may actually find more consistency, you know.
Right, so that's going to be the double issue, because in some instances, you know, there may be a time when they get six compact customers that are in their spot and they're right up on the current crosswalk. Uh, if we paint them, you know, they're probably only ever getting five. That's, that's kind of the trade off.
But after the Culver's done, are we going to maintain that sidewalk or are we going to get rid of it?
The sidewalk is maintained.
I mean, the crosswalk, excuse me.
So right now, you know, the way the current design is, was we were going to, um, we were slightly modifying the angle of the crossing, but we were ma- we were maintaining the crossing and making it ADA or keeping it ADA. And so I I don't think that resulted in a net loss in parking, it was just kind of enforcing what should have been always enforced. But if we, if we're saying that we don't want to maintain that crossing in the design, you know, I'll take a closer look at it, but that has not been part of the discussion to this point.
I thought that was.
That was part of the discussion.
Yeah, you eliminate the one at Seaside.
Right.
Not part of the discussion in terms of the Culver design. I know we talked about separate of the Culver.
We talked about a lot, because we already have another one twenty feet away.
You know, if if we could leave the crosswalk in front of Seaside One, so people only used it when they were standing with Seaside One behind their back, the sightlines are fine, okay? It's when you're standing by the Realtors', um, Realtor's office, Elm Street side, and you're trying to cross, it's, that's, that's when it's dangerous.
What about moving the walk up to the hydrant? Is that a safer spot? You know where the hydrant is in front of the.
Other side of the driveway.
On the other side of the driveway.
Uh, right, uh, not ideal because people coming out of Town Hall, making that right, you know, they're going to look up.
Yeah, but.
And then they're going to make the turn, it's, it's not ideal.
You've got the hydrant there, there's no car on the corner there, you can see everything that's going.
Remember the conflict of the car leaving Town Hall.
Yeah, leaving Town Hall, if you're going to turn right, you would be crossing that sidewalk, but you've got uh, that whole or that crosswalk, but you've got quite a bit of space there because of the hydrant.
His point is people are looking left for oncoming traffic.
Yes, that's correct, I, well, that's correct.
It's just not ideal, I, I mean.
I'm just trying to get away from the.
We can tell them that, but then you're, as you're crossing, on the other side, you're definitely interrupting the parking because there's multiple parking spots on the opposite side.
Yeah.
So the problems aren't necessarily the hydrant in terms of parking, it's the.
The other problem is, is a lot of people are crossing from Elm Street, they're going back behind the Town Hall, and the sidewalk is next to Seaside One, it is not on the hydrant side. This blue sky, spitball.
I mean, so if, if you're telling me we need to lose the crossing, then I will let you know if it turns into more parking or lesser, you know, that zero, in terms of the Culver project. But I I think we had already kind of skewed the crossing to maximize potential parking. Whether or not it resulted in an extra spot, I can't tell you, but um, we we were trying to maximize it.
So maybe we we can let Chuck paint the lines for the parking this spring and kind of take another look and see what the.
So that, that exercise will be based on the existing crosswalk.
Right, right.
Reconfigured.
Let's see what it looks like, but that includes adding, hopefully adding the crosswalk back at Morse Court.
Do you, do you have a plan of the reconfigured crosswalk?
So if you go on, uh, kind of like I said, we have a Central Street Culver.
Yeah, I've looked through it a little bit.
So there, there should be a set of design plans there. So the, so typically, the traffic stuff is, you know, at the end, it's all about structural and, you know, geotech and all that stuff, but then you get to the end, you'll see no line painting.
Okay, yeah, I'll take a look.
Should be, should be there.
Okay. Next. Um, I don't, is the size of the morgue.
Thank you, Chuck.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Good work.
Well.
Step into it, Tom.
So, um, a couple, a couple of factors here. The request from Manchester Maureen to put in Bow and Stern moorings. Was encouraged by, by the harbor department. Primarily because it could take up less, you know, harbor real estate, if you will, by preventing swing and better defining the channel. So it created a wider channel, channel, it created a better defined channel, and it took up less mooring space, more harbor space. Um, so the HAC and and the harbor department certainly felt that that was a positive. Um, even even if they had more, more moorings. Let's just put that aside for just a minute. And, and also as part of Manchester Marine's expansion plan to bear finger floats off of the land, um, DEP also required them to put in um, bow and stern of the moorings, again, to create a better defined and wider channel and less congestion with additional boats coming out of the slips. Uh, that also went through planning board, site plan review, that was approved, uh, each HAC had it included, et cetera. So the, the bylaw, the harbor regulation um, has a section on bow and stern. And that section identified Area One as the first area that bow and stern was going to be required for all mooring holders. And so as part of that effort, the bylaw was was amended, I forget, four, four or five years ago, um, maybe something like that. To, to better organize the boats in the inner harbor, um, very congested um, lawless, no defined way to exit, go from the ramp out to the bridge and out. And so the regulation that was adopted at that time was to say, we could, everyone is to go to Bow and Stern in the inner harbor, and it was to add no new additional moorings. There'd be no net increase in the moorings because the goal was to improve navigation and avoid um, the congestion that was in the inner harbor. Um, as part of that bylaw, it also said that bow and stern could be considered in other areas um, in in the harbor on a case by case basis. But it had the language in there that said that additional moorings would be prohibited as a result of converting to bow and stern. So from, from uh, uh, reading of the, of the language that's in there, it would certainly indicate that Manchester Maureen should not have been allowed to. I'm sorry, Manchester Marine, thank you, Manchester Marine should not have been allowed to increase the number of of moorings. So if they were going to bow and stern, they had ten and doubling up, then they would have reduced to five doubles rather than ten doubles. That, talking to the HAC and and to Bayon, they, they feel that that was an oversight in the regulation that, that they did not intend to prohibit adding new moorings in the rest of the harbor through bow and stern. In fact, their goal is to do just that over, over time. They feel that that is a way to um, add capacity to the harbor by adding more bow and sterns and more efficient use of harbor space, and you can add more, more moorings over time. Um, but that's not how the bylaw technically reads. The the uh, the permission to, to grant Manchester Marine those additional moorings did take place in spite of what the, what the regulations say.
So it wasn't understood at the time. Regulations.
When the regulations were put into place, the focus was on inner harbor, that was step one. There wasn't, they weren't thinking about the rest of the harbor, though they did add the language that if if it's in the other areas. But there was inconsistency there, right? So it didn't match what their goal was. It focused on the inner harbor, saying we don't want to allow, it should have said prohibition in the Area One, in Area One. And that was what was not added, it should have been, and it wasn't. So, fast forward, here we are today. The Manchester Marine has gotten their permit from the state, requiring the bow and stern, they've gotten their site plan review from the from the planning board that showed the, the twenty moorings, not the ten. Um, HAC has reviewed it and approved it, and in fact, you reviewed it and and we're going along with that, no one was questioning it. It has come up just now that there's an inconsistency with the bylaw. And that, yes, technically granting those extra ten is in contradiction to what the bylaw currently says. So we need to do something, right? You need to make a, a, a decision here as to what you want to do. So if you want to allow it to continue with Manchester Maureen to have the twenty and not just the ten, you need to amend the bylaw. You need to correct what it says in bow and stern to, to say that's just for Area One, not for the other areas. So that's, that's an option. You can do that same thing, but say, Manchester Marine, you you should not have gotten those extra ten moorings, that's really for the public, the general public through the waitlist and not your ownership. You know, there's some issues there because they've already invested the money, they put in the tackle, they put in the floats, et cetera. Um, so there's an issue there, but that's another option, you can correct the bylaw, but not allow the extra ten. A, a third option is to say, we, we want the IG's office to come in, Inspector General's office to come in to do a review of all the transactions anyways, we can add this to the list and have their guidance on this. Um, I, I will say that they had reviewed the, in the past, the ten additional moorings, and they didn't object to that. Now, I don't know how deep of a dive they did in our regulations when they said that that was okay. I, I just don't know that. So that's a third option. Fourth option is you can say, okay, we're in a bit of a pickle right now in terms of making commitments to people and their plans, and it's now almost April. So we allow the, the extra ten to go forward this year with the caveat that you're going to be revisiting all of this between now and the fall and make some determinations as how to go forward. So that, that is a potential fourth one that, that I'm talking to Jeff earlier, earlier this afternoon, he said that might be a, a fourth option, I, I gave you three in my memo.
So, so is it fair to say, though, regardless of what option we choose, we need to fix the bylaw?
Yes.
Okay, so that's, and it sounds like there's a few, three words, or something we need to add in there.
Yes, I, I, I.
And that's it, just go.
Totally believe that long term, you want to make sure that that bylaw gets amended to allow the possibility of adding more moorings through bow and stern conversions.
When did this, when, when did this bylaw get passed? This like five, six, seven years ago?
I want to say five plus or minus years ago, yes.
I think a driver for this was these floats. These floats were not there ten years ago.
Which, I'm sorry, I don't.
But the, the, those floats. In, in the harbor, yes. They were not there, and when you had a bow stern mooring, all right, you had a bow stern mooring and the boat was just there.
We had very few bow stern moorings.
Yes, there weren't any, but they started to get added, but then the floats were not there, and as soon as you put a float into the picture, people say, heck, I can put another boat on the other side of this. Nope. And I'm wondering if that just became kind of a driver for people to say, hey, maybe this makes sense, and I'm certain, I mean, discussions with Bayon or whatever. And that's how things happen. No, you can't just do that.
Right.
But it facilitates a decision to say, hey, this might make sense. Otherwise, you've got two bow stern boats that are like, what, eight feet apart from each other?
Right.
Looks a little weird.
Yeah, it, it's certainly.
Right.
It adds to the functionality.
That's right, but if you have a, if you have a, a float there, and so I can see where that got a lot of people kind of thinking that way, and then, I, I don't know, Bayon, you're, you're on the phone. And then I I don't know, Bayon, you're you're on the phone. Would 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 people come to you and say, I'm putting a mooring in here? I mean, I'm putting in a boat, I'd like to put a float here, can I put a boat on the other side of this?
So that is absolutely not the genesis of this. The genesis was bow and stern moorings inside the drawbridge to alleviate the horrible congestion and lack of access to the ramp, the town docks, to the inner harbor marine. And so we did that in area one, and that's when that language was written. The it was an error of omission. And the other language that's in that same exact part absolutely leaves the or door open. That's why we have bow and stern moorings in area two of the Fishman R, in area three, in area four, basically everything on the north side of the channel. The addition of floats is only allowed with the recreational boats if you partner with another existing mooring holder. So essentially, each of those floats represents two moorings that already existed in this harbor. So somebody who had a mooring could not put in a float, say, hey, buddy from Beverly or you know, hey, let's buy another boat. That is one hundred percent not how it works.
So there weren't any extra moorings necessarily that went in as a result of a float being put out there?
Correct.
No, no, it was
Except in the case.
Another existing mooring holder already in this harbor.
Yeah.
That partnered with, and each side is a mooring. When the person on one side gives up the mooring, it gets reassigned from the waitlist.
So so the exception to that.
Commercial.
The exception to that was Manchester Marine.
All commercial.
Well, those those commercial.
Although I have a difficult time conceiving of how you could have two moorings at a on either side of a float. And in fact, those moorings existed on or about in that spot with no float when they've got, you know, three hundred and sixty degree freedom to circle around. It seems to me that you've got a lot less space there.
They don't swing around. The floats don't sway.
Unless you went by this there.
Yeah.
The the only way you get twenty boats where you had ten was to go by
Bow and stern.
It's it's less, it's less space taken up in the harbor. Manch- well, just use Manchester Marines and say they're the ones that are the big deal. Those twenty spots are taking up less space in this harbor than the ten free swinging ones that were in that same part of the harbor.
That's the point I'm making.
Less.
Floats promoted because you could have two boats in where there was just one with a with with just a single.
In that sense, yes.
Yes.
So it sounds like we have two separate issues here. One is we need to update the bylaw, something, right? Second is, what do we do about the historical, oops? So two separate issues. Do we want to, you know, just take a show of hands, is, you know, are we okay with?
I would like to see how the bylaw works because what what concerns me is what Bayon has just almost said, that that when you put in, I have a moor. I put in a float. Does Bayon give me an extra mooring permit? So why does
I just said no.
Why does Manchester Marine get ten extra mooring permits?
Right, I just think there's two separate issues. What do we do about the situation? But I I just wanted to make sure we agreed that we should change the bylaw to be clear.
Change the bylaw, clear it up.
Yeah.
Which you mentioned this season.
Well, I, well, that's what I was asking, is that something we can do at this next town meeting? It's a few, if it's a few words added to the bylaw, is that something we can fix quickly?
Yeah, I I mean, it's it's not gonna affect
When Brett gets back, I don't know.
It's not gonna affect this season.
This is the harbor regulation. This is the harbor regulation, that's not the bylaw.
Not, okay, so it's not
It's not something
The general bylaw.
It doesn't have to go to town meeting.
Oh, okay, we're just the just the regulations. Okay.
Yeah, this is
We don't have to go to town meeting to change this. Okay, that's what I was wondering if we're under a time constraint.
Well, there's a time constraint and there's a season coming up.
Yes, yes, yes.
We don't change anything now.
That many boats in the water, yeah, depends how fast.
So here's the problem, so we approved this to have. Manchester Marine went out and told all these people, yeah, you're gonna have a mooring this year. Now it's almost April. And we screwed up. This is what it comes down to. I don't, and I'm not saying that Manchester Marine should have ten. I'm not saying they should or shouldn't at this juncture today. What I am saying is that it's only fair because we screwed up to allow this one more year the way it is. And then figure this out. Figure out, figure out.
I agree.
I agree with that too, yeah.
I agree.
Figure out if they deserve ten more or not. I'm not, I'm not, right now, I've heard a million things, okay? This has gone back and forth, and I don't feel I can make a decision today whether they should have ten or not.
Correct.
But to be fair to people who they promised moorings to on IROK, I don't think this year we can go back on that.
I agree with that. I I totally agree. I guess my question is do, um, this, these are the temporary moorings, right, that we were talking about? Provisional, thank you. Did they already give out all of them? I don't think they have. So the question is, if they haven't made any commitments for five of the moorings, let's say.
They've made commitments for five.
Right, so they made, so they still have five left to go.
Something like that, five or seven, it might be twelve.
Then we have another problem.
I I'm just asking a question, I'm not
The other problem was the wording of the the one year waiting list.
Right, exactly.
Like if we, when we didn't put that into the bylaw,
Right.
there are five other people that want those moorings.
Right.
Okay, and actually, they they deserve them because we didn't, we, again, we made another groups.
Yeah.
But right, but so there's five other people, I've talked to one gentleman, and so there are people that want those moorings. But we can't promise them that morning next year now because we don't know what we're doing.
We don't know what we're doing, you're right. We don't.
So they have to know this is
They were always
This would only apply to this year, that's
And it may go beyond that, but we can't say that right now.
Yeah, it's a tough situation.
So, and really, just by saying, hey, if you're on the waitlist, you can be considered by Manchester Marine. That's all we have to do. All of these people, I think, are there.
Well, I've looked at, I've looked at the Mets.
Yeah.
I've looked at what we passed, and it doesn't say anything about that anybody having to be on the waitlist for any length of time.
In the past, somehow that got in there.
I don't know where it got in, because
We did have, we did have that conversation.
Conversation about, yeah, making sure people were on the waitlist for a year, but did we not take a vote? Is that what you're saying?
We never amended.
I don't think we voted anything.
Okay, yeah. We had a discussion, but we didn't actually vote a change. Got it, okay, yeah, that's my recollection. So those people can have those moorings. All ten will be filled for this year, but the every
Well, we don't know that, but
Assuming they will, they'll they'll get filled. But every one of those ten people need to understand this is a one year thing, it could we have no, right.
Send us another note if you have an opinion.
Is that where we're at? And and we still need to, we still need to clarify the
Yes.
The regulation, whatever the right word is. Is that something that we can fairly quickly?
Yeah, you do that your next meeting.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, just just one more thing on this topic. The I, you mentioned the transactions and and audit, financial audit. I spoke with both Mr. Starkey and with Bayon this past week because when I saw the issue outlined in writing, it light finally dawned as to what the discrepancy was. I went back and looked at the bylaw, the by, the actual bylaw, section seven, Harbor Master bylaw. And it it says we have to, you know, publish, post lists of all mooring permits, including mooring numbers, stickers. So there's like three or four things that we have to post online to, so that they're public. It mentions something called all mooring assignment transactions. That's also supposed to be posted. I interpret this language the same way that Mr. Starkey does. That I I looked at all the things we were posted, I talked to Bayon. We don't have what I would also consider as a transaction log. You know, a financial person might call it a general ledger, someone else might call it an audit trail. So it's the puts and takes, it's like add mooring, change mooring, you know, that type of transaction log, so there's traceability. I also agree that we're not currently meeting the bylaw, but I think the bylaw isn't actually clear on what we mean by a transaction list or transaction log. So I would recommend that we, as we deliberate these other things related to the harbor, I recommend that we clarify this language in the bylaw. What is, what does it mean to have all mooring assignment transactions? What does that mean? And perhaps we could get asked the harbor advisory committee to outline, what are the, you know, few data elements we need to collect as part of a transaction log to meet the the spirit of what was intended when town meeting passed this. I wasn't here in 2011, so I don't know what discussion happened and what people were asking for. But I do agree this bylaw needs to be clarified. I think it would help. So anyway, that's
No, there are lots of different transactions, not just talking about boats moving around. I mean, Bayon, from time to time, will say, I'm getting rid of these moorings for whatever reason, I don't know.
I I think it's
Round is changed.
That's a a mooring is created. A mooring is assigned to someone.
Yeah.
A mooring is still
Eliminated.
Removed, a mooring is assigned from one person to another.
Or a name change. He said someone got married, their name changed, and it looked like the mooring was assigned to a different person, but it was the same person. So that's why there are these little nuances that, you know, we shouldn't have to necessarily yeah, figure out, but I just think we need to put those few data elements in the bylaws so it's very clear. And and I have complete confidence that, you know, Bayon's doing great things and and everything was done on the up and up, but I I just think this would help with the transparency issue.
So are you suggesting that we put together a change of that bylaw for this town meeting?
I don't, I I don't know what the sense of urgency is.
Again, it's your, it's your
No, no, the bylaw.
This is section seven.
Which establishes the role of Harbor Master, says that the Harbor Master reports to the administrator.
It says Manchester by the sea general bylaw.
I mean, you could depends how how much you want to clarify it. If you could put it an explanatory expansion in the regulation, which is your approval, or you could amend through town meeting the general bylaw.
I don't have any preference as long as it it satisfies, you know, our residents' need for transparency. Um, I I I don't have a preference, I just, we should be clear what we mean by a transaction law somewhere.
Where are we at?
Well, we need a motion, I think, for the folks who are wondering what's gonna happen with their their boats this year.
I think, I think a motion doesn't order that
Open, open, open the entire waitlist.
Let me try this and you guys can tell me what.
All right.
I'll make a motion. I know, but I'm trying to think, my brain doesn't work. I'll make a motion that we allow a one year Yeah, or twelve, is that what?
We allow anyone on the waitlist to apply, to receive
Receive.
A mooring from Manchester Marine for this season only.
To be el- to be eligible, that's all.
To be eligible.
To be eligible for a provisional mooring.
To be eligible for visual mooring for the 2025 season.
Right.
Up to ten, right, ten, ten or twelve.
We have to be inclusive. Oh, so we, five are, five are already spoken for, but we're gonna make it inclusive of all ten.
Just saying that
Whatever there are.
So let me try this.
Don't, don't.
I'll try this. I move that we allow anyone from the mooring waiting list to receive a provisional mooring.
Be eligible.
Be eligible for a provisional mooring from Manchester Marine for the 2025 season, up to ten. That's what video is for. That's what video is for.
Is there any further discussion? Okay. John.
Yes.
Anne says no.
Yes.
Yes, Brian says yes, and Jeff.
Yes.
Okay. I would like to recommend strongly that we do invite the Inspector General to
Sure.
It, since we have no transaction log.
Yeah.
To
I think, tell us what to do.
Yeah.
Recommend so.
See whether, in their opinion, we are following the state and local regulations.
Yep, absolutely. Do we need a motion on that, or are you just gonna go do it?
We'll let the ministry reflect there was consensus.
Okay.
Was agreement to move forward with
That's fine.
An audit of the operation.
Good.
Through the Inspector General's office, if they'll do it. I didn't have anything else we need to know.
No. I do know that his his program that he has now it's it's on his database, has all that transactional. The the only problem is like, you you gotta be able to go down to his office and sit down, talk with him, say, can I have this, and he'll give you everything.
Yeah, that that's why I went to see Bayon before I mentioned it, because the data is there, but it's not posted in a manner that like I said, it's 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 language. There you go.
Someone is going to come up with new language for the regulations regarding bow and stern, the creation of new moorings.
Where? And where?
Not, the the Harbor Masters is in charge of figuring out where things fit. That 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 seems perfect.
Yeah, I'm talking about the areas and things right now, it's confused in area one versus everything else.
And maybe at the same time move the illegal moorings back into that right corner.
Yeah, that's just out of place.
So can we put this on our action list? Because I think we're gonna need to review either the update to the, so there's the change in the file harbor regulation for area one. Then there is the additional harbor regulation change to enhance the bylaw around transactions. And then third thing is the audit, requesting the audit from the Inspector General. So maybe we put one or few of those on the action list under one category so we can follow up. How long do you think it would take to, like, a couple of months, or what's what's a good timeframe for a follow up?
Well, the change for that area one issue, that can be next, at your next meeting.
Okay.
Maybe we can flesh out some language about that transactional process, how to, how to convey that information.
Also to go into the regulations.
Right.
Yeah, okay.
Go to regulations.
So those could happen in the next, you know, two to four weeks easily. The IG Um, the IG is probably a fairly lengthy process.
But, but we can get it.
We, so it's already on their radar. So they're already doing an investigation.
There are other people that are.
They're already looking at things here.
Oh.
Oh, here?
Yeah.
For us? Okay.
Yes. So, um, uh, we will, we will talk to them and see if they can expand it. And, and if not, then we will have to look at perhaps our auditing firm.
Is, is whatever they're doing here now, is that a routine audit or was, did somebody request it?
Or is you question, yeah. So we'll, we'll give an update.
Okay.
So as you know, uh, three, uh, three finalists have been advanced. Um, you will, we're slated to view their interviews on April 3rd. I had hoped to have some, uh, the questions from John. I don't, I didn't receive those. No, no, you didn't directly from him. Okay. So I, I think it's appropriate for you to at least.
Thank you.
It would be fine for you to discuss some of the key areas of questioning that you want to pursue in, in preparation for the April 3.
So how do we, um, here, you know, our line of questioning in a public forum here, when we don't, you know, that all the candidates are watching us right now, so without, you know, still allow some spontaneity, um, you know, do, so he's gonna send us a list of questions. We can't deliberate by email. How do we settle on, you know, the questions with, without, you know?
It'd be bad, so much.
Tipping everything, yeah.
So if, if, if you are pretty, if you're very concerned about, you know, revealing what the questions are ahead of time, then the way to avoid that is for, uh, for John to send all of each of you individually his, his suggested questions, and then you send your suggestions back to him and he compiles everything.
Okay.
That's, that's how they did it with the screening committee.
Okay.
Um, so that's, that would be the way to do it without discussing publicly now.
Right.
Of those questions.
And then each candidate responds to those questions.
During the interview.
During the interview.
Well, we, that's the other thing. We should be asking the questions.
Yeah.
So John, typically what John does is he leads off and then you do sort of the follow-on.
So I actually, because this is my first time, um, hiring in a public forum, you know, being watched and filmed, I went on YouTube and I looked at some of the, um, other town, um, uh, select boards that interviewed candidates. I watched some of the interviews and I also watched some of the meetings that, when the select board did the deliberation. It was really helpful. Um, so, you know, if you haven't done this before, I highly recommend it. Uh, what I saw was a typical panel interview where I'm, I'm sure they all hired their consultants, whatever. Um, but each of the select board members took a turn asking questions. There was no consultant there, um, asking the questions. We asked. That's.
And there's one candidate there.
Yeah, so like a candidate, the ones I saw, candidate, there was a little table there, you know, and the candidate was, you know, surrounded by the select board and they just took turns asking questions. And anybody could certainly pipe in and ask for a follow-up, but the, the consultant didn't ask the questions, so.
No.
When I, I went through a superintendent
Yeah.
search and, um, that's how we did it. So basically, we decide on the questions we wanted to ask, you know, like your suggestion Greg back and forth, and then everybody picked the question they felt they wanted to ask, and that's how we did it. Either, I'm, I'm not tied either way. I'm just, that's my experience.
So, so does John Petron become a clearinghouse for questions? Is that the way it's gonna work?
So I, I guess I would suggest that one of you volunteer to have a conversation with John to, to discuss how you want to do this.
Well, he, he would know the, the role, what the ways are.
Well, yeah.
But, but you, it's, it's your show, so ultimately you get to decide. He can advise you as to what he would recommend and you can, you can find to it, fit your needs.
All right.
Et cetera, but.
Yeah. So, so the current, the couple of things, issues for discussion. So one was how do we formulate the questions without the candidates knowing what they are in advance? The second was, you know, us getting to ask the, the questions ourselves. I'll send you the links, Brian. And the third was, sorry. Um, the, the third issue.
Getting there. All right. Got it.
Third issue, um, which somebody brought up in one of those YouTube videos, um, was they did not um, have a live feed of the interview. Because what they didn't want was one candidate being interviewed, the other candidate sitting in the parking lot, listening, right? So I'm, I'm, but the basic, yeah, so the, they recorded it and so any citizen could view it after the fact. Um, they, these other towns had a room, you know, big enough to accommodate uh, the attendance they felt would be warranted based on the fact that they were not showing a live feed. So I just, these are logistics questions that I hadn't thought about until I saw these videos. And I just think we need to spend, you know, figure out how we want to do this, you know?
I mean, I can, I can agree with that point.
Yeah.
Do you think that's what Dan, I read somewhere that's what Dan was doing? That they weren't live feeding.
Yeah.
I think that's one of the ones I watched, the interview process. Yes, yes.
I'll watch this next week.
Yes, yes. I watched that one. There, I think the one where the select board was deliberating, I think that was conquered. It was a few years back, but still very helpful to see, you know, the chair, how, how he navigated the situation and, and how they. The other thing was how they discussed the candidates and how they did their deliberation, because obviously you don't want to hurt anybody. You know, it's all public, um, you know.
So Dan is, is probably, was that paradigm also?
Dan is paradigm, yes.
Oh, okay. So maybe not Petron, but somebody.
Yeah.
Okay. So they have, all right, so we still need to figure out the synthesis of these questions. I mean, we all, all have ideas here, but Petron probably can consolidate or, and he brings questions that he says you should ask this.
Right.
You should ask that. So, I mean, I will volunteer to do that. If, uh.
Yeah, I'd like to have some input there too.
Okay.
The two of you could.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think we did that the last time when we selected him, so let's team up on that.
Okay, all right.
I think, um, I'm just not clear on the timing since my calendar.
What is the schedule for all this stuff?
We're gonna be interviewing them and.
So April 3rd, so you're two weeks away from this.
Okay, so we need to be doing this now.
Right.
And did you get a sense from him as to when he's gonna send us the questions?
He should have those questions. I'm sure he has them.
Maybe you could ask him to, cause we need input from everybody.
Right.
He, he needs that input from everybody. Okay.
I, I.
All of us can send, I mean, we just say, hey, send him 10 questions. No more than 10. 10's enough.
That might be redundant though. If he has a list, I think.
Yeah, but he can.
Efficient for us to fill in the gaps. It's also, I think we, you know, based on the packages we get and the candidates, we're going to want to ask specific questions of specific candidates based on their background, right? So.
Yes. Okay. So we don't have to ask everybody all the same questions?
They can be tailored to the individual.
Yes. When do we get these CVs?
Um, you should get them next week.
Okay, how about we tell John by when we need them?
Because we need them, you know, to Kathy's point, we need them before we formulate the questions, because a certain percentage of them will be specific for these.
Yes.
For these folks. You know, I mean, there are questions that relate to our town, but there are questions that relate to the applicants.
Can you at least get us the general questions, you know, in a couple of days?
Yes. Yeah, he said he would have them today.
Okay.
Okay.
And then the, the candidate packages, you know, when, when can we expect?
When did you say that was?
The latest, middle of next week.
Six?
Yeah.
Okay, no later than the 26th?
Correct.
Okay, so then we get to review the packages and if we have any, you know, um, specific question.
Additional question.
Yeah, okay. What about the room? As far as logistics, would we want to interview the candidates here or? You know, I don't know. I'm just asking. We have enough, do we think any more people would show up than this?
Should we do it at this, the school cafeteria?
Did, do you recall your own interview, Greg? Uh, was it in this room? Okay, it was in this room. Okay.
But that was before.
Oh, before.
Social media.
That's true. That's true.
World change of social media.
Yeah.
As a matter of fact, I was.
2010, the iPad was brand new in 2010.
Maybe the candidates ought to have access to the Manchester page to know what you're getting into.
Well, I mean, this is, this is not a public hearing in the sense that the, nobody who's here is gonna be.
No, but they have to be able to witness it.
They can.
They can witness it, but it will be on YouTube or it'll be, it'll be recorded.
Promoting it one way or another. I just, like I said, watching these videos caused me to think about questions.
Right.
And if, so I, I think we're all saying, we don't want a live feed, right? We just want to record it and people can watch it after the fact. And the only other question I had about it is, uh, for people who might want to watch it live, do they, is this the right wrong?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, what?
We're just, I'm sorry, we're trying to think how we're gonna record it without streaming it. This is all through Zoom, but.
16.
You can see what they're available.
Well, they did it for other towns. Somebody did it for another town, so there should be a way to do it.
We'll, we'll check. We'll check.
Okay.
We'll, we'll figure it out.
So we need Petron's.
Yep.
We get Petron's questions, we send our questions back.
Right.
You do talk to Petron about the combined questions.
Yes.
And he said.
Who's leading the questioning?
Well, so he's, well, I'm assuming we're all taking turns. I don't know.
Well, he, he's sending the questions, are we sending them back before we get these backgrounds or after? It's really gonna be kind of after. Because some of the questions we're sending him are specific based upon the backgrounds. So whether Petron sends these questions tomorrow or the next day, it doesn't make any difference. He just has to get it a couple of days before March 26th. Because there's not too much that and there's some we can do, but still.
We interviewed Jake. Yeah, what I'm saying is that the, we had a question.
If we can get them to 24, then of course.
We get it on a fly, you know, can't really do that stuff.
Okay.
So you can have, you can have standard questions and then have follow-up.
We, we all have standard ones.
Right.
But we, we are all free to ask other questions. We're not bound by those questions.
Right.
But you wanna, I think the premise is you want to have that standardization upfront as much as possible so that each candidate is getting a fair shot at, at giving their spin. You know, it's a generic questions, right?
They would answer the same.
You know, so you, you can, but you're gonna have to tailor it to the person at some point because they come from, they have different experiences.
Get all that?
I'll, I'll call you out tomorrow, but I will also.
Thank you.
Say that the two of you will be reaching out to.
All right.
What else going on?
Um, liaison updates.
I don't have time.
Okay, liaison, oh, I actually had, wait a minute. Now, do you have anything more, Kathy's?
I'm pretty much empty. I've been away a lot. I can't see. I'm trying to think. I know Chuck, uh, I did speak with Chuck about the water meters. He's more or less between the consultants and everything else, come up with, I think, a, a favored supplier. Okay. But that Kathy, when you suggested the AI, and he was impressed, I was impressed, because I sat down with Chuck to review this. Feeding all of the information into AI, which RFP was, and having his spit back.
Yeah.
It was a very good summary. What they rated and what the consultant rated were not quite the same, but still was very useful.
It's time saver. That's all.
It was. It was. So, uh, other things, no, I'm not gonna say anything about seniors. They've already been talked about here. And, uh, no, historic commission's kind of quiet, so.
Okay, I remembered what I wanted to, um. So, uh, there was a economic development. Um, breakfast Gloucester, yes. That's the chamber, thank you. Um, Gloucester Chamber, yeah, so, um, I attended with, um, Steve Carhart from the Downtown Improvement Committee, very informative. Um, they, they outlined some resources. I was really hoping, um, Mark could have been there. Um, and someone from the planning board, but it was just the two of us. They were very helpful in outlining resources that towns and cities could use to help uh, you know, create a vision for their downtown and also, um, you know, grants that were available to help do that. Uh, and they talked a lot about what makes, uh, you know, good downtown. And, um, so I think, uh, Steve went away, um, uh, thinking about how the Downtown Improvement Committee could reach out to the business community, you know, working with Jim Brown and, and the Chamber to try and, um, you know, better understand what we want our downtown to be. We have empty storefronts. People are worried about that. Left to their own devices, um, you know, the property owners are just gonna do whatever they can to fill the, the voids. Um, I guess Gloucester was funding an actual district manager. You know, cities have more needs, um, in terms of their downtown management. But someone to make sure, you know, the streets are clean, the, the signs are in good shape, you know, the aesthetics, et cetera. There was somebody whose job it was to worry about that, right?
I'm sorry, I, I, you, you're advocating for another job?
No, no, no. It's Gloucester, Gloucester. But, but, but it clarified is there is somebody who's responsible for the downtown.
Yeah.
And the question is, in our town, who is that? It's right now, we have that committee, but are they really responsible for determining the what the downtown should be? You know, should it be 20% retail, you know, well, there's gotta be a strategy for the downtown. That's why I really wanted Mark there, because I know he's talking about, you know, potential zoning change. He's been talking about that with the planning board, but before you talk about zoning, you should talk about what you want your downtown to be. So it was a very informative breakfast. Um, I do think if no one else is gonna get engaged, that the Downtown Improvement Committee will, will take a stab at learning more about those resources, bringing them to Mark and, and trying to, to make some traction there. So that was that.
No, uh, just talk, just checking my shovel right now.
Pickleball start. Wait a minute, when does pickleball start?
April, it's gonna be up. Doesn't time, yes. Driving a little crazy. April 1st, Gerald just said.
Oh, great. That's a perfect date, right?
Each tags to, just hang around. She's gonna give me more information too.
Check in with me tomorrow.
Yeah.
School makes its decision on its budget. Um, as I said earlier, Essex has decided that it will level fund the school, um, and put any increase in the school budget on them.
Which means.
Well, there are people, there are people aren't saying that.
The town administrator and the finance committee and the select board are saying. The town administrator and the finance committee and the select board are saying. And that's the way it will be presented to the town.
Yeah.
But.
What's the budget increase hit for them on that?
About eight and a half percent.
Eight and a half?
Yeah.
Okay. It's quite a statement.
And it may be bigger because Essex added, and it, and it, another meeting explained that they thought that the school should use 150,000 less of their, um, reserves.
Oh.
And, um, not accept 20 school choice students, so that's taking $250,000 out of the support for the budget. Um, that doesn't help them. I don't know what to, we'll give it, what to do about that.
They, they wanting to reduce the revenue, yes.
Means they want, they wanted to save it for the, for next year.
And they think that the reserves would be saved for next year. The nine, not taking choice students, they think is just, they are concerned that the choice students, um, will not bring in more revenue than they cost.
Okay.
They don't bring a bunch, what do they bring in? They don't bring in a whole lot?
They bring in $5,000.
Five?
And, yes, they, five per head, where we are actually burning $27,000 per head. On the other hand, the cost of one extra kid in a classroom of 16.
Should cost maybe more than, I don't know, something.
Yeah.
Yes, the same.
So, um, and it is also true that if a choice student needs special services, those special services are paid by sending them, um, and not by, by them receiving.
Interesting. That's, that's a state rule, or?
Yeah, yeah.
Interesting, okay.
Great. Um, Inspector Canada.
I'll have some.
Um, that's longevity bench, yeah, that's it, that's. And, um, voluntary emission, uh, Jim, you tricked.
Is that, oh, that's me. I can try to read it.
You can do it. Can you read it?
I, I can.
Okay.
Okay. And any comments to the consent agenda? I moved that the board approved the consent agenda items.
Second.
John?
Yes.
Anne says yes, Kathy, yes.
Brian?
Yes.
And Jeff?
Yes.
Have administrators report.
Um, yeah, the self-explanatory, uh, Pleasant Street site, uh, looking into the cost of the, uh, all the 20e contamination review, um, trying to get some cost estimates for that. Senior Center fundraising efforts phase one is, is well underway, developing the campaign, identifying key donors. Uh, we talked about, it'll get underway this summer under the soft version, and then the public, public face of that will get underway in September. Uh, nomination papers for elections are due April 1st.
Um, you know, return papers?
Yeah.
Yeah. I don't have an update on any term that.
I can, but that'll happen.
Uh, Lisa, you have your hand up?
She's just been calling.
Yes, um, I did raise my hand. I wanted to, uh, thank everyone for the approval of the, uh, for the longevity bench project, for the bench, uh, in front of the friendship tree. I appreciate it very much. It's going to be a very special bench. Uh, I, I mean, your ongoing support has been, um, just so appreciated. Thank you so much. That's all I wanted to say.
Thank you, Lisa, thank you.
What's up?
Return?
That's it. I almost leave it on.
You can.
Yes, yes.
Brian, Kathy, yes. One who says this and that brings on say.
Yes, I jumped the gun. Jumped the gun.
What do we, uh, we need to sign, a little.
Yes. And the, uh, for.